All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, March 26, 2025. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First on the agenda is the Superintendent and Student Board Member Report. So, Dr. Smith, take it away.
So, Ms. Heisler, I'm gonna kind of move a little quickly through some of my things and perhaps you could as well, so we're recognizing we have a full house here. So that you can spin it around and see it all.[94.86][94.86](APPLAUSE). Love it. First and foremost, great news, all of our pre-Ks are now all fully credentialed. We are two years ahead of the blueprint being able to do that. So, it is a wonderful testament to the work in each one of our schools by our very dedicated school staff as well as support staff from Central Office. We have, we're in musical seasons. Harry Potter was two weeks ago fantastic at Great Mills High School. High School Musical opened last weekend. It's available this weekend. Shrek is the weekend after that at Chopticon. And then, when we roll into April, we have Leonardtown Middle School, Margaret Brent, Esperanza Middle School, Chesapeake Public Charter School, and Spring Ridge Middle School all having different spring plays, and they're all gonna be fantastic. Please come out and see them. I did new teacher visits and talked to new teachers there. We had mock interviews at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, 15 programs, 68 industry partners doing interviews. Mrs. Washington, as well as staff from the Central Office was there. 430 students were interviewed and are well on their way to finding gainful and meaningful professional employment after they graduate from St. Mary's County Public High Schools. It's great that we have a big audience here. I need to see the same level of commitment and outpouring when we actually get to the funding of St. Mary's County Public Schools. Budget update, when we get to state funding legislative session, we were originally told in January that we were going to receive $147.5 million from the state in funding for next year. The governor put forth a bill that reduced that by $2.2 million. We all went up to Annapolis. We testified, we begged, we pleaded. We said there's so many things in the blueprint that are going well, there are things that can be trimmed back. The one thing you can't do is do not cut foundation funding. Foundation funding is where we find all of our money for the arts, extracurriculars, and most importantly, teacher salaries. As a result of our work, now we're $2.5 million in the hole. The county commissioners on Tuesday voted to move forward to the public hearing, and they are flat funding the school system. The county commissioners are anticipating at least $15.5 million worth of new revenue, and the school system is flat funded for next year. Now, they've said there's lots of time still, and so maybe they could be convinced that if you have $15.5 million worth of new money, you might want to consider spending some of that on the children and those who, people who work with children in St. Mary's County.
And just to clarify, flat funding means the exact same amount
As last year.
...2026 that we received in 2025 despite all of the increases across the board in teacher salary, in utilities, in all of the programs
Incremental costs, health care.
...that we had, all of our incremental costs.
Right.
So, the same amount of money that we are working with this year is the exact same amount of money that we will be working with next year.
After they raised our income tax to pay for education last year.
So, all teachers had an income tax raised from 3% to 3.2% effective January 1, and the result of
All citizens, all, everyone.
Everybody did, but certainly, but certainly, everybody in the county. But the result of that is that they decided to flat fund us for next year. So, we will now be 39.8% of the overall county revenue. That's the lowest in the history of St. Mary's County Public Schools. That kind of fits with where we are across the entire state. We are 20 out of 24 in per pupil funding. We are $200 from being the lowest funded per pupil in the state of Maryland. If we are flat funded for next year and we get to the end of the budget season up the road in Annapolis, and they really do do all the things that they're saying that they're gonna do, we will be at the bottom because the... We've proposed for you a budget of $195 million for next year. Currently, we've been demonstrated to have the revenue for $287. That means we're $7.9 million off of what we proposed for next year's school budget. So, there are gonna be a lot of decisions, and there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for people to come out and talk about what's important to them, much like I'm assuming you're gonna be doing this evening. But keep in mind that the conversation had with us doesn't change what happens with county funding, and certainly doesn't change what happens with state-level funding. Because the blueprint that everybody voted for and talks about how great it is, the blueprint includes no money whatsoever for safety and security, no consideration for keeping meaningful class sizes, no money whatsoever for the arts and arts education, no money whatsoever for athletics, no money for extracurricular programming, no money really to fund smaller schools, five of which are down here in St. Mary's County, no money for additional technology, no money for transportation, no money for utilities and the incremental increase in cost in utilities, and no money for employee benefits and the incremental increases that everybody has to pay to keep health insurance, retirement. In fact, the state is going to hand back all of the increases in retirement back down to the county, which is another reason why they are flat funding us, because they're gonna have to cover that bill. So, we all, the blueprint, the blueprint, the blueprint, the blueprint doesn't support any of the things that are on this list. So, with that, here we find ourselves in March. We are two days away from ending the third marking period. We are gonna be doing a teacher pipeline summit on Friday where we're trying to figure out ways to get people interested in education and to pursue a degree in education and break down barriers and include non-traditional people in considering. That's gonna be on Friday where we have Calvert, Charles, St. Mary's, University System of Maryland, the College of Southern Maryland, and MSD are all gonna be in attendance. It's gonna be a great session. We have early dismissal with the end of the marking period, and then on Saturday, we're doing a new teacher job fair. So, we're gonna try to get people to come down to St. Mary's County. So, that rolls us into April. April, we have two days before we get to our spring break, and then after you get back from spring break, it'll be a hop, skit, and a jump until we end the school year. So, again, the job fair is on Saturday, March 29. And with that, I turn it over to the student member of the board.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Hannah Heisler, and I'm the student member of the Board of Education. This month, I've had a pretty busy month, so I've completed school visits to every single one of our 19 elementary schools, and I have officially talked to every single fifth grader in the county, which has been very exciting for me to gain insight into the student perspective of the school system. And then also, as a student member of the board, I lead the Superintendent Student Leadership Council. So, three schools worked with their Superintendent Student Leadership Council teams to lead the Rising Freshmen Knights at each high school, and those were a success. And then, we are currently in our planning stage for our final general assembly meeting, so that will be in April. For Maryland Association of Student Councils, we had a Division V conference on March 1st. So, Division V is Charles, St. Mary's, and Calvert County. So, we held a gathering at Huntington High School with about 50 delegates from all three counties, and we kind of came together to talk about our county's similarities and differences and how we can work together as student leaders to build ourselves up. And then additionally, I missed last meeting because I was attending the Maryland Association of Student Council's convention with delegates from St. Mary's Association of Student Councils from all three high schools, as well as Margaret Brent Middle School, and we worked to elect our elected officers. So, those are our elected officers, if you want to look into them. And it was just a really great experience to connect with student leaders across the state, as well as student member of the boards across the state. And then additionally, for the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, we held our final general assembly last week on March 20th where we voted for all of our elected officers, including our President Mahi Shaw, our Vice President Juliette Grant, our second Vice President LJ Reynolds, our Treasurer Isabella DeRasavi, and our Secretary Madison Baker. So, those will be our officers for next year. And we're currently seeking appointed staff positions, so that is middle schoolers and high schoolers who are looking to get leadership positions and looking to get more involved in their county, and then that is the link of the applications. All right, next, I have some pictures of everything that I did. So, on the far left, you'll see pictures from the Division V conference, me, as well as Angelina Nguyen. We presented a workshop on divisional unity and came up with the regional chant. And then, in the middle, are pictures from convention, including, on the very bottom, a picture of me and the Maryland Smobs. So, that was awesome to see and network with all of them. And then, you also have pictures of the St. Mary's Association of Student Council's delegation throughout the conference. And then, on the far right, you see me and the President Angie at our last and final GA as seniors, so very exciting. And then, on the bottom is our SMAS elected officers for next year, so congratulations to all of them. All right, and then my last school visit was to Greenfield Knolls on March 5. So, again, I asked them what it means to be here. They said to be here in their school was to listen and learn, and they have a goal of 94% attendance. They're close, they're really close, they're at 90%, so they're working on their attendance. And they said to be active participants in their school and their school community. And they said they come here every day to see their amazing teachers, Ms. Swett, Ms. Lincoln, and Ms. Higgs. When I asked them what it means to be engaged in their school, they said it's to do your work, to be excited to learn, to ask questions, participate, keep your eyes on the speaker. And they were really excited and engaged at a tech center performance, sorry, a tech center presentation, which was right before this, and it was the Teacher Academy presented at Greenfield Knolls. So, they really loved that presentation. They also are super engaged in their ELA classes, their math classes, and science classes, and it helps them stay on task when they have the give-a-hoots, which is an incentive reward. If you can see on the picture, the little bins by the smartboard, those are give-a-hoots. So, when kids are well behaved and engaged in class, they can get give-a-hoots and get rewards. So, they really liked that incentive. When I asked them what it meant to be approachable, they said it's to be nice to everyone, to smile and make eye contact, and to just have fun with each other. They said that they become more approachable through their class assignments and partner work, and then also through community gatherings in which they have dances, raffles, and incentives, so that helps them come together as a school and a community. And then, lastly, when I asked them what it meant to be renewed at school and how they can get renewed at school, they said it's to start something new. They love playing sports such as basketball, football, and soccer. They said if you're in a bad mood, sometimes you just need to eat some food, take some time for yourself. They love when they play Gaga Ball during PE, it's their favorite game. They also just love to play games in class like Silent Speedball. They love to play trivia because they get rewards. They love indoor recess. It was actually pouring down rain the day that we visited. I was soaked. Yeah, we were wet dogs, but they were really enjoying their indoor recess on that day. They also love Field Day. They're looking forward to their teachers versus students kickball match at the end of the year, in which the students are definitely gonna beat the teachers. They love their field trips such as canoeing and going to museums, and they love their specials such as P E, art, media, and music. They also love their owl mascot, who does not have a name, but some of the kids suggested Jimmy. So, I don't know, take that into consideration, I suppose. They also love doing Just Dance in school, and they love that they can come to school because they have great connections with their teachers. And then additionally, they love ending their days with school clubs such as robotics, Good News Club, and Crochet Club. And that's it.
That was it? We got to every single elementary school, and we spoke to
Yep, all 19.
...every single fifth grader. Well done.[876.57][876.57](APPLAUSE).
Okay, so, we have no recognitions or public hearings tonight, but clearly we have public comment. So, here's the way this is gonna go. So, for those of you who signed up on this list and who actually gave me a subject, I'm going to attempt to group everyone together. I'm also gonna attempt to group you by school, so that way, we're not jumping all over the place. Have my highlighter, if I miss you at the end of the night, let me know. So, and I'm gonna save the music people for last, because there's other topics on here. So, Cindy and Bill Peel, are you here? Are you speaking together or separately?
Separately.
Okay, and both of you come up. And while you're making your way up here, I'm gonna read my statement. So, we welcome public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not comment. It's not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns such as those should be resolved at the level closest to the situation and directed to the superintendent. We also will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students outside the scope of the public comment. Keep in mind, we sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so if you are going to comment on either of those items, please make sure that you do not direct your comments, that we have any prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to render a decision later. Speakers are assigned at the beginning of the meeting. You have three minutes. Kim is going to keep the timer, so when you hear it, please wrap up your comments, so I do not have to cut you off.
And if you have written comments
And written comments, if you have them, you can give them to Kim, so she can include them in the minutes. All right. Ms. Peel, you're up.
Thanks, thanks for having the meeting and giving us the opportunity to speak and for all the work that you do. I'm Cindy Pyle, grandmother of students graduated from, currently enrolled in, and soon to be enrolled in the public schools. I'm a former National Board Certified Teacher and now very happily retired. I'm here to ask each of you that budgets are being adjusted and positions are being shifted around, that you support creative arts, and I ask that you have conversations with teachers to ask what their needs are and what their solutions would be to the problems. Teachers know their students, they know the resources and help that they require. Different teachers have different students, they have different needs, so it isn't always one size fits all. Teachers are in the buildings, they're aware of adjustments and repairs, modifications sometimes needed to make the spaces more workable. Teachers have ideas to improve safety in buildings, which makes me wonder, have those unfenced temporary classrooms? Do they have fencing and some safety improvements? And I asked somebody about that once, and they said, "Oh, we're not sure about that." So, I hope that that still happens, that that will be taken care of too. Teachers shouldn't have to compete with the public to have their voices heard, so I would like to have you consider going into the building sometimes, maybe hiring a substitute who could be there for a part of the day, and then that substitute to go to different classrooms and let the teachers have not just a time to talk to you, but to actually have a one-on-one back-and-forth conversation, so they'd have some uninterrupted time to do that. So, again, I ask you to, if there's things that need solving, listen to the frontline workers. Those are the teachers, and they know how to address goals of increased student success and the challenges that are before all of you. So, please, again, listen to and have conversations with the teachers. Thank you so much.[1102.91][1102.91](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Bill Pyle. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. And I must say that Cindy's been wonderful over the years. I hear everything that she, when she used to come home from school about what worked and what didn't work. She gave you a lot of that to here today. I want to talk about this budget thing, and you've told us the red ink and all that issues. I'd like to get more information, though, and I've heard that a number of the programs may be either reduced or cut. Music, arts, physical education, these are so important for developing minds, bodies, and students, that to reduce those is a big mistake. It helps everything else they do during the day if they have these other programs that they can escape from whatever other things. And I'm a math major, and I needed that throughout high school and college to just get out of this, so that I could get my mind working again. The questions I have, how much is next year's total budget being reduced? And I think you went into that. And for all curriculums, are individual curriculums being picked out as the ones that are going to be reduced? Which ones are they? And these areas are all important, and the degree to which they are reduced will impact everything else they do. And is this at all grade levels, if there is a reduction, or is it in specific grade levels? Again, younger minds need these things as they're developing. Older ones are gonna need it also. I just would like to know more about what's being planned with this locked-in, steady-state, whatever you call it, budget. And are there other subject areas besides music, arts, and physical education which may not be fully funded because of this? There's gonna be some shifting of money, I'm sure. And I just don't know, the reading, I've looked through the budget, and it's huge to understand the impacts. I believe you all have the resources to do that and get the public that information to help them understand what areas that their children going to school may not get the full funding that they really deserve and should have. I don't know in terms of going forward from here. You said talking to the county commissioners, I believe, is the appropriate next step here, and expressing how important we believe this education process is, and hopefully, they can figure out how to find the funding. I'm a taxpayer, you all are taxpayers. They are our future. Without them, we have no future. I'll be gone six feet under, wherever, and their future has got to be good if this country is gonna survive, and you see that today. We need educated children, we need them to be fully functional, able to compete on the world level with all the things going on. And so, this is the time that these young folks need the support we can give them. Raise my taxes, I don't care. I will put the money in. Thank you.[1294.08][1294.08](APPLAUSE).
Okay, Brandon Russell.
Mr. Pyle, they did raise your taxes.
And I thank them for that, because
They just didn't give the money to us.
But, by the way, my grandson, that's in Michigan, just graduated from State College, Pennsylvania, from Subah, who, wow.
That's fantastic.
And graduated from Leonardtown Middle School.
That's awesome. Thank you, good sir. Appreciate it, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brandon Russell from Leonardtown, Maryland. I'm not here to talk about the, well, I am here to talk about the budget, but not for the reason to do with arts and PE and all of that, which I certainly do support. But, since your last meeting, there have been some pretty big developments, as I'm sure you know, at the federal level, with President Trump working to reduce the Department of Education. Some of these actions have included firing or laying off around 1,800 employees, some of which have been since reinstated and placed on paid leave, and others who have been laid off again because their division or department or whatever was downsized while they were gone. President Trump also announced that the Small Business Administration will start handling student loans, and that Health and Human Services will oversee special education and nutrition program funding. But both of those agencies are also facing their own downsizing in addition to this new workload, so that's gonna be tough. And the question that I keep thinking is, do any of the people who have lost their jobs or been laid off actually deserve it? And I don't know. And I also don't think that the federal government knows, because they haven't performed an audit or analyzed where strategic reductions can be made, and the impacts of these decisions are gonna be huge. So, I took a cursory glance through the fiscal '26 recommended budget and pulled out a few numbers just to highlight the point. The total budget includes a little over, I think, $33 million put towards special education, and in the limited time I reviewed it, I was able to see that at least $5 million or more, probably more, in costs for special education, medical assistance particularly, that could be covered by the federal government. Additionally, I found that there is a little over $7 million in the budget for food and nutrition programs from federal sources, $3.67 million for Title I from federal sources, and I'm sure there's a whole bunch I didn't list. Those are all huge amounts of money, and we can't afford to lose those things. So, I'll leave you with these few thoughts. First, how are you, as Board of Education members, advocating to prevent these cuts to our school system? Are you educating the local and state-elected officials about the negative impacts of losing these federal funds and other resources that might be impacted as a result of the downsizing? And as the gentleman said just before me, is there a way you can provide that information in a concise format so that the public is also enabled to advocate on the school system's behalf? Thank you.[1522.41][1522.41](APPLAUSE).
We're gonna continue on the education theme. Anne Marie Abel. There she is.
Good evening, I'm Anne Marie Abel, Leonardtown, Maryland. My children were St. Mary's County Public School students, as are now my grandchildren. I just want to share with you just some thoughts of kind of why we have a public education system in this country and why it's important. Defense of Democracy is a volunteer-driven organization, and they are the ones who will assure that we stand firm in defense of our children, teachers, families, and communities. I'm gonna share with you the Defense of Democracy core beliefs. Public education is a cornerstone of democracy. We believe America's public education system has a duty to fulfill certain public missions that go beyond the purely academic purposes of all schools, public and private, to provide universal access to free education, to prepare people for citizenship in a democratic society, to guarantee equal opportunities for all children, to prepare people to become economically self-sufficient, to improve social conditions, to unify a diverse population. Freedom, equality, and justice. We believe that freedom of conscience, equality, and justice have been the basis of our democracy since the founding of our country. Although anti-democracy groups have worked to strip some citizens of these rights, we believe that in order to perfect our democracy, we must continually strive to make these principles integral to everyday civic life in America, particularly in our public education system. With Critical Thinking, we believe that critical thinking is essential for citizens to fully participate in a democratic society. To develop this skill, students must engage with facts, evidence, observations, and arguments in order to form judgments based on rational, skeptical, and unbiased analysis and evaluation. Professional Expertise, we believe that academically qualified and professionally certified teachers, librarians, media specialists, and administrators are the most qualified to evaluate age-appropriate books and materials, design effective learning environments, teach students, and help achieve the goals of America's public education system. Equity and Inclusion, we believe everyone deserves the opportunity to live their full potential, and that our public schools and communities are stronger when they are full of opportunities for people with diverse identities, backgrounds, and perspectives. We believe that America's public education system has a duty to provide the best education and support services possible to all children, regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, gender, sexual orientation, sexual identity, disability, or socioeconomic status. And we believe community public schools should be safe spaces that enhance the social, emotional, and physical well-being of young people and their families, while also making our communities safer places to live.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1775.11][1775.11](APPLAUSE).
April Woffen.
Good evening.
Good evening, I am April Wathan, Media Specialist at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School. As a team, we are here to address a crucial topic, the proposed A through D scheduling of media specialists in our schools and the requirements of our school description as they relate to our job description as they relate to student and system success. As author Jarrett J. Krososki said, "It's an awfully sad misconception that librarians simply check books in and out. The library is the heart of the school." According to our SMCPS website, "The roles and responsibilities of media specialists are teacher, instructional partner, information specialist, and program administrator. You already know as teachers, we play a vital role in fostering learning, collaboration, and engagement in the educational environment in the best interest of our students. We serve as instructional partners, working closely with teachers and supervisors to connect student information needs with curricular content, identifying links between learning outcomes and various resources to ensure that students have access to the right materials. We design authentic learning, integrating information and communication skills that support content standards, which enables students to engage in meaningful, real-world learning experiences, enriching the learning environment beyond the traditional classroom boundaries. We are information specialists, providing leadership and expertise in acquiring and evaluating various informational resources and model ethical practices, ensuring that students learn how to use those resources responsibly. As we maintain focus on information quality, media specialists empower all students, those who have support and enrichment at home as well as those who do not, with the skills that they need to be critical thinkers. Wearing this hat, I was awarded a national title, School Library Journal's Hero of Equitable Access, which brought a positive national focus on the day-to-day application right here in St. Mary's County Public Schools of how we're truly living out our principles of equity because we know our students deserve that. In addition to the previous roles, we are also Program Administrators Number Four. We work closely with school leaders to define and guide the library media program, ensuring it aligns with school improvement goals and the vision and mission of St. Mary's County Public Schools. We're cornerstone in creating policies that support the educational mission of the school and consider resources such as budget, facilities, technology, and textbooks. We lead efforts to develop and maintain collections that are diverse, inclusive, and reflective of students' needs, create a central hub for learning, and support students' academic and personal growth. During my time at George Washington Carver, while wearing the hat of Program Administrator, I secured nearly $15,000 in computer science, robotics, and 3D printing materials for our students. I did this on an A-through-J schedule, not A-through-D. To achieve the full potential of the library program, we ask you to please recall that we are teachers, instructional partners, information specialists, and program administrators. We ask the Board of Education and our school leadership to allow us to please continue providing highly effective library programming that supports students on their journey to becoming globally competitive leaders upon graduation. We believe everyone can benefit from the full range of services that a full-time librarian can provide on an A-through-J schedule, which is what our students deserve. As Krososki said, "The library is the heart of the school," and we can keep that heart beating strong, guiding our learners to success with your support. Thank you.
And then Mary Owen, if you guys want to stack yourselves up.
Yep.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Smith, and I am the Media Specialist at Mechanicsville Elementary. I would like to share with you a few examples of how the proposed A-through-D schedule will negatively impact our county's youngest learners. Media specialists play a critical role in curating a library collection that meets the diverse needs of our unique school populations. We work diligently to select materials that resonate with our students and ensure all voices are represented and that students see themselves reflected in the collection. The proposed schedule severely limits our ability to properly curate resources. One of the ways students are engaged in the media center is through library displays and reading promotions. Creating excitement around books and literacy that inspires students to explore different genres, authors, and topics is a vital part of fostering a lifelong love for reading. If implemented, the A-through-D schedule will have an impact on our ability to support literacy development. The proposed schedule would no longer allow for a consistent media day each week. If consistent days for specials, including media, are not maintained, book circulation will decline, and so will equity of access to resources. When library books are forgotten at home, students miss out on valuable learning opportunities. A significant concern with this proposed schedule is the lack of access it would cost for some of our most vulnerable students. This schedule would make it nearly impossible for our pre-case students to visit the library for checkout. In our schools with regional special education programs, students who are not ready to fully include come to the media center at a time when the space is not occupied. This small group setting allows them to become familiar with the space, feel safe, and experience specials while working towards joining with the general education students. Opportunities such as this will be lost with the proposed schedule. The SMCPS Battle of the Books program is a shining example of how we promote literacy, foster teamwork, and critical thinking. If the A-through-D schedule is adopted, there simply will not be time to run this program resulting in many disappointed students. In their media classes, students complete STEM activities and 3D printing projects, allowing them opportunities for problem-solving and fostering creativity. These skills not only enhance academic learning, but also prepare students for future careers. Activities such as these take an extensive amount of time to prepare, and it takes time to print 3D projects. With the proposed A-3D schedule, there will likely be no time to offer such programming. With the guidance of their media specialist, students create morning announcements helping to communicate important information and celebrate student achievements. There simply will not be time for this if the proposed A-3D schedule goes into effect. The media center is essential to student learning, literacy, and creativity. The proposed A-3D schedule would limit access, weaken programs, and hurt all students. Without these resources, student achievement, engagement, and curiosity will suffer. We ask that you consider these impacts and others mentioned tonight as you hear presentations and make decisions regarding changes to the elementary special schedule. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mary Owen, and I have been a media specialist in the county for 16 years. I am currently at Duke Elementary. Tonight, I'd like you to take a moment to imagine what it is like for our students and staff when media specialists have the time needed to fulfill their responsibilities. What might the impact be if we don't have the opportunity to meet the important duties outlined on the county website? After hearing from fellow media specialists tonight, we hope that you will understand how the proposed A-3D model would hinder our critical role in supporting student success here in St. Mary's County. Let me take you through a typical day in the life of a media specialist. My day began with frantic messages from the teacher struggling to connect her smart panel to the internet before students arrived. Next, I gave my clerk new books to add to our collection, and I guided her with the proper shelf placement. Then I spent time wrapping up book fair details, reviewing the financials, and starting the necessary forms. Once school started, six Battle of the Books students, excited to trade books and give me updates on their progress, visited the media center. One student finished the entire list, and of course, we had to celebrate. By then, it was time to get my resources ready for my six classes, grades K through 5. After teaching three classes, I grabbed a quick lunch and tried to catch up on my emails. I received two from my supervisor, one informing us about how to manage benchmark consumables, and one asking for artifacts for the National School Library Month. That prompted me to remember that I still needed to complete the MSDE State Report for Libraries and the End of Year Procedures Checklist. I also noticed a phishing email that looked suspicious, so I alerted IT and sent a warning to our staff members. Later, I confirmed that Pinch, the Blue Crab mascot, would visit our community gathering to kick off a reading incentive program at Duke. Finally, I managed to complete the financial form for the book fair and fill out reimbursement requests. The day did not slow down. I taught primary grades, reviewed two videos sent by admin to add to the morning news, and responded to an email from teachers requesting that I print unit posters on the poster printer. I filmed and produced the Duke Morning News. I ended the day with two teacher consultations about iPad apps and a final email to Battle of the Book parents about an upcoming meeting. If you were keeping track, you might have noticed I didn't have a single moment to plan for my upcoming classes. Every open block of time was spent supporting our school. You see, school media specialists do far more than check out books. We are program administrators, instructional partners, information specialists, literacy champions, technology leaders, community builders, and these take time. Most importantly, studies consistently show that strong school library programs led by certified media specialists positively impact student achievement, especially in the area of reading and writing. We believe the best solution that truly serves our students would be a middle ground of an A-through-J schedule with a full-time media specialist at each school site. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else on media? Okay. Then we will go on to music education. Stephanie Laut.
Good evening, Board members and community. My name's Stephanie Laut, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to address you this evening. In our Music in Our Schools month, I stand here on behalf of concerned teachers, parents, students, and community members regarding the proposed changes for the coming years in St. Mary's County Elementary Schools. On March 7th, specials teachers were invited to a 25-minute Zoom meeting where administrators presented a change to special schedules and the current pull-out model for music ensembles at the elementary level. Following this meeting, there was a Google Form sent out to provide feedback. The change presented amounts to the reduction in PE and general music minutes for students overall, a massive increase in difficulty for media and art teachers to provide essential and creative programming, and a cut of half the time that students may spend in specialized music classes, such as band, orchestra, and chorus. Additionally, any student who chooses to participate in band, orchestra, or chorus will not receive their general music content. Further, the proposed schedule invites room for confusion in busy families and young minds who depend on weekly routines. This will have a massive impact on the quality of education and the youngest students in our county. We understand the challenges that every county in the state of Maryland is facing, and we're appreciative that there's not a wholesale cut to the special programs across the board. We know that you value what these experiences add to each student in St. Mary's County Public Schools. So the following speakers have brought their public comments this evening to highlight these experiences, to express concern over the method of this decision-making process, share evidence-based rationale for continued supportive specials, clearly communicate the opportunity cost of these changes, and make a request to be part of the team that finds a solution that benefits all. Thank you for your time.
Megan Gianuzzi. And I'm sorry about that name, if I butchered it. Gianuzzi?
Gianuzzi.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the band director at Lenartown Middle School for the last 18 years. My husband is Steven Gianuzzi. He's the band director at Spring Ridge. Together, we've each been teaching for 20 years individually, and I'm coming to speak to you this evening on behalf of both of us. It's ironic that these comments are delivered as we wrap up music in schools and art in our schools this month, and jazz in our schools will start just next week. In our tenure, we've instructed multiple generations through a pandemic, and now are ferociously rebuilding programs through inflation in an uncertain time. We have direct concerns for the proposed master schedule changes for our youngest musicians and how this will impact programming on the secondary level. When taking students to countless county fair performances, everybody is pleased. National anthem performances at both the Blue Crab Stadium and other locations, including since the Blue Crabs have been in Waldorf, and even food truck rallies with students spaced six to nine feet apart when our students were rebuilding our communities post-COVID. We've proudly represented St. Mary's County at the College of Southern Maryland Jazz Fest held every April. Our middle school students have performed and learned from a variety of professionals, including Chris Fadala, Dennis de Blasio, Chris Berg, and Steve Weist. Our ensembles are so large that they frequently run out of chairs and stage space, and these artists are excited and impressed and hopeful with the performances instructed, offered through our schools. Middle school bands have outplayed other neighboring counties in the tri-county band opportunities. The last opportunity we had, Lenartown Middle School, had 13 students out of 45 chairs available for all middle schools. That was all of Calvert County combined. High schools have had their fair share of countless trips amongst St. Mary's County. And music students on a nationwide level have an average of 92%, 90.2% graduation rate, and 93.9 in attendance. The schools that produce the highest academic achievement in the United States today are spending approximately 20 to 30% of their day in the arts specializing in music. But you need to remind yourself that we never forget where we come from. Secondary success doesn't start with me. It starts with my elementary colleagues, igniting the spark of desire of music and art in the soul. Students are unable to get along with those who don't look like them, don't act like them, don't think like, or have anything in common with them. And life skills such as responsibility, time management, and taking on extra work so that they're successful are the unwritten aspects that make music students better employees down the road. So what does a cohort model student look like coming into the secondary realm? They're unprepared. They can't handle middle school. They can't understand the content that we instruct. They're struggling with transition, and they just have meltdowns. Time management and completing work is difficult. And without music instruction amongst our schools in a regular effort, teachers find that they're actually more aggressive in the end game. Enrollment will crop back due to exposure, meaning that we'll end up teaching more classes. And they end up like me, forced out of field, teaching PE and health education because we don't have enough educators and we don't have enough students in our classrooms on a regular basis. And I've been doing it since my son was eight. He's now eight. And I've been doing it for nine years. I suggest that we not be Montgomery County, firing one out of every three secondary art and music educators. We don't need to be like Calvert. We don't need to be like Charles County. We need to be St. Mary's and do our best every day. Thank you.
Jillian Gianuzzi.
Hi, my name is Jillian, and I am in 5th grade here at Town Creek. I play the saxophone, and I have two parents who teach. I have been able to play with so many great people because I learned to play sax. I have performed at marching band competitions with Luther Martin at Lenartown High. I played at the Blue Crab Hubs with Lenartown and Spring Ridge. I also played Honor's Jazz Band and Honor Band this year. I have also played with Lenartown Middle School at their winter concert. This is all because my teachers understand that music is important to me. Yes, it's some class time to play, but I have been able to make up the assignments. They understand that the ELA and math lessons are so long that they take two days to teach. I notice when I have to learn a hard lesson in one day, hey, my brain is on overload. When they split it into two days, I can handle the material. If the new schedule is used, I know I would struggle to be focused on the amount of content they want me to learn in one sitting because it is so detailed. I am worried for the change in schedule for next year. I understand my classmates will have to sit longer and be less engaged in class. They will forget information in the lesson when they are long. I am hoping that you all will listen to the teachers that make our days better by listening and sitting with them to find a solution. Thank you for your time.
Deborah Hines from Evergreen?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Hines, and I'm a kindergarten para at Evergreen Elementary. I'm also a mom of a third grader at the same school. I'd love to highlight all the inspirational moments that pertain to music and how every music teacher in our school pours their heart and soul into music opportunities for our students. But unfortunately, I only have three minutes, so I'm going to focus my time on literacy. My son has always struggled with reading. Despite his strong work ethic and amazing teachers, something never clicked until this year. As a third grader, Evan had the opportunity to join the strings program, and he and he chose cello. I was very curious. I was very curious how it would go, considering reading is, reading music is a type of literacy. Would he be able to keep up? Would he struggle with the mechanics of reading and playing at the same time? Would he get frustrated and want to quit? Because of Evan's lower reading skills, he has been pulled out for small group intervention with the IRT multiple times a week since 1st grade. In addition, he's now pulled out for strings twice a week for 30 minutes. Again, I wondered if he would be able to keep up with his classes and reading skills if he was pulled out so much. As of the second marking period, my son's report card said "partial command for reading on grade level", which is the earliest that he has ever achieved that in a school year. I can only imagine that in addition to his interventions, reading music 30 minutes twice a week in a small group has also helped him achieve this. The exercise of using his entire brain to compute the notes he sees, translating that to what his fingers do on one hand, also while making the other hand produce a sound. I'm not going to say it's music yet, but it is a sound. That all has also translated into reading words better. His confidence has skyrocketed, and his enthusiasm for school, especially on Tuesdays and Thursdays when he has strings, has also increased. My son is a perfect example of how music can enrich academics. It's not just a nice-to-have extracurricular activity. Music has strengthened his literacy and ability to read on grade level. As a person who grew up with music education, I know music benefited my life, and I have been encouraged to see the same confidence, excitement, and focus come to my son. I asked my 9-year-old if he wanted to share anything about his experience with strings this year. He said, "I love strings. Mrs. Burrows makes me excited about strings. I liked playing in the concert we did last month, and I'm excited to do another one." My plea to the board is that we consider ways to continue providing our current music education offerings and opportunities with the same frequency because it allows students to expand their brains in fun and engaging ways. Music education not only creates a well-rounded curriculum, but also encourages students to participate and attend school regularly, resulting in positive benefits in all aspects of their education. Thank you.
Renee Campbell?
My name is Renee Campbell. I'm a music teacher at Piney Point Elementary. I have taught in some capacity in this county for, both public and private, for over 30 years. I have a job, I know, right? I have a job I absolutely love. I get to teach children and help them become responsible young people. I get to mentor. I get to know my children and their families. I get to make a difference in a child's life, and I get to support my colleagues in the most positive of ways. What I have witnessed in the last year has been heartbreaking and disrespectful to myself and my colleagues. It's disrespectful in that none of the changes or impending changes were discussed with us until March 7th. Basically, I feel like I'm witnessing the dismantling of a job I have dedicated my life to. At the end of last year, I was told that I would no longer be able to meet with my band in small groups, that it would now be during specials, and there would no longer be the requirements to have general music. My concerns fell on deaf ears, and the issues I anticipated, including disciplinary issues, came to fruition. The other five schools that made the changes this year had the same experience. Students who participate in general music, whether through listening, playing, or creating, offer a wider variety of benefits encompassing mental, emotional, social, and even physical well-being. It also enhances cognitive skills, creativity, and overall quality of life. It should never be in lieu of a performing group. Band this year is during specials with my 5th graders, both beginning and second-year students in the same class. That group consists of 13 beginners on seven different instrument groups. Learning how to play, learning the maintenance and mechanics of their instrument, not to mention all the fingerings for the notes and music theory. It's a physical job. All while, my second-year students patiently wait their turn and vice versa. I have them play together, but it hasn't really worked that great. In essence, the students and I are being punished for fostering a successful program because our kids, we have such large numbers. The impending A, B, C, D schedule will make it even worse by diminishing the amount of time they have in music and PE, further limiting their exposure to a subject that complements all the core subjects. We keep promoting attendance and giving incentives to get kids to school. That's what specials accomplish without incentives. I can promise you, I don't mean to offend, that most elementary students are not coming to school because they want more math, science, or reading. They love their specials. I implore you to rethink the proposed schedule changes. We have a system that has been working successfully for well over 50 years. At the very least, let's all sit down and discuss the concerns instead of being shown a bunch of inaccurate information on some slides that invited no discussion. Please do what's best for our kids and solve this temporary budget issue in a less destructive way.
Cadence Redman?
Hi, my name is Cadence Redman, and I'm currently in the choral program at my high school. I have plenty of friends who do both strings or band and chorus, and they seem to enjoy that variety a lot. I'm planning on pursuing journalism in college, but I was actually elated to find out that I was placed in an arts program that would allow me to continue studying and participating in a variety of music forms. The speech that I'm about to read, I actually wrote in 2018 for my school speech contest and performed it at the county level. So it will mostly be that, but with some modifications. And so, basically, I believe music is an important aspect in schools. When students enter the world of music, it can transform them and help with their learning. While singing or playing an instrument, students have to read either lyrics or notes. Music is an exciting way to involve students in multitasking. This can help improve their focus in the classroom. Many schools in our system have restricted the availability of music programs. Students who used to be able to pick freely if they wanted to sign up for both band and chorus or do strings and choir now have to choose one of these programs. Kids who may find the band and chorus rooms their safe havens are now limited to one choice. The option to be able to do multiple forms of music helps broaden students' horizons. When they're exposed to all these types of musical education, they don't feel pressured or pigeonholed to one kind. Mary Lou Risen from the National Association of Music Merchants said that, "While children come into the world ready to decode sounds and words, music education helps enhance those natural abilities." So you see, it can be quite an important part of enriching students' learning environment. My music teacher from elementary school, who actually just spoke, was fun and exciting, and I couldn't wait until the next time we had class. She made the room an exciting place full of laughter and singing. My middle school teacher was just as awesome. When we walked into his classroom, music was playing. We started the session and ended it with music. It was exhilarating, transporting, and fun, and I feel like this exposure to the arts and music education at an early age is important to all children. It can be very important in school to have friendships made in music classes as well. When they enter the music room, they may find people who have many similarities and make new friends. This can help kids feel better around their peers because they may have seen them at a chorus practice or band rehearsal. Students who may not have been able to find a classmate to talk to now get a room full of people who share their love of music. Music can brighten a student's day. When they really connect with a specific piece, it can transform them. When they're down or sad, it can make them happy and uplifted, which can carry over into their school day and for the rest of their life. If we continue the availability of music programs, I am confident it would enhance students' language development and social abilities. The musical community is a fantastic place filled with joy and magic. I strongly think that music should stay in schools and be more available in schools. Thank you.
Nathan Early?
Good evening. My name is Nathan Early. I've been a music teacher in St. Mary's County for 17 years, starting at Carver Elementary, then Ridge Elementary for 10 years. Now I'm in my fourth year at Green Holly Elementary. I've taught all levels and forms of music available to elementary students, general music, band, strings, chorus, pre-K, special education, et cetera. I've served under five principals, six assistant principals, and three supervisors of fine arts. In my time teaching in St. Mary's County, one of the things that I have always deeply appreciated was the school system's commitment to providing the broadest possible arts education to our students. We start instrumental students in 3rd grade, which is a fantastic age to begin exploration of what's possible. We provide students with options where they can decide to pursue instrumental and vocal music through both pull-out lessons and after-school opportunities. We do everything we can to set a strong foundation for students to make an informed choice when picking a middle school elective, which then builds to high school and beyond. Unfortunately, we're in danger of losing that foundation. With the proposed schedule moving to eliminate pull-out classes and go to a four-day rotation, which requires students to choose only one option for music, we are not only limiting their choices at that time, but limiting their growth and learning long-term. An instrument isn't something you just pick up and are immediately good at. It takes time and effort and dedication across years of study to even begin to reach the point where you can see what is possible for yourself. Intensive vocal study is the same. Forcing students to pick an avenue so early puts an artificial limit on their possibilities. Now, let's look at the numbers. Under the current pull-out model, students in 3rd grade have a mandatory general music class and may choose to join strings. 4th and 5th grade students have the option to join chorus and either band or strings. This means a three-music class minimum and up to nine music classes in two weeks, or 18 in a month. Under the proposed four-day model, we're reduced to seeing students at most five times in a month, regardless of their choice or preference. Maybe you're of the opinion that this is still a lot of time and must have negative consequences. Here's where the research comes in. I have a summary here of research done across decades in many locations around the country of student groups who are in a pull-out music instruction model, starting in 1959, '63, '81, '85, '89, '92, '94, '96, '97, '98, twice, 2001 and 2011. They all reached the same conclusion. Pull-out music instruction results in no statistically significant negative effects on overall student academic achievement. We've always been told that everything we do must be data-driven. Here's the data. Pull-out music instruction is not the problem. Thank you.
So we have Christopher Pinto, and then next on deck is Brian Smith and I guess Kate Holm.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, members of the board. I'm Chris Pinto. I started teaching in 1998, and in the last four years, I've been a music specialist at Lexington Park Elementary School. Some time ago, I actually sat in your seat. In New Jersey, I was a member of the school board for nine years. So I know, fortunately or unfortunately, I know what it feels like to be in your seat. I'm hoping, and I'm confident, that you're a well-functioning board that allows Dr. Smith the leeway to make decisions without micromanagement, but at the same time provides the necessary guardrails of oversight on behalf of the community. Tonight, I'm asking that those guardrails encourage our administration to reconsider the proposed schedule changes to our elementary school music programs. Over the years, I've learned one universal certainty in education. Every four or five years, something new comes along that has everyone scrambling. A looming curriculum change, a confusing state mandate that's obviously destined to fail, or a new way of doing things that, very strangely, looks very much like something we unsuccessfully tried a decade or two ago and then scrapped. Then, after the compliance chaos settles, it's quickly replaced by the next something new, and everyone's scrambling again. Anyone who's been in education for a while knows this cycle all too well. And although we know it, why does it continue? I think it's a cycle of decisions that are made with good intentions but lack proper process. And I believe the process lapse in this something new is that the supporting data just isn't there, at least in terms of the test scores that were referenced in that infamous PowerPoint we were given on March 7th. You know, in logic terms, we have a classic case of causal fallacy. A is true, B is true. A must have caused B. Students are being pulled from class for music. Test scores are in the tank. Causal fallacy, students being pulled for music caused test scores to be in the tank. It seems like common sense. If kids aren't in class, they don't learn. If they don't learn, they don't score well on the test. But if we look closer, kids have been pulled out of classes for band, chorus, and strings long before test scores started to decline. I understand testing has changed, but we don't have the eureka corollary data point that pinpoints the decline of test scores as simultaneous with pull-out music being implemented. What we do have is a significant amount of data from valid national and international studies that show the opposite. Involvement in a quality school music program raises student achievement. And in this day, in this age of data-informed decision-making, why would we do the opposite of what the data actually supports? I firmly believe that if you could reconsider this schedule change and give a few amicable and seasoned performing arts educators a role in its revision, we can help you further our students' academic achievement and preserve, or even enhance, the quality of our music programs. You just have to be willing to risk giving us a voice in the planning process and not the reaction process. I thank you for your time.
Brian Smith, Kate Holm, and then next on deck is Allison Kerr.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Holm. I'm a music specialist at Letty Dent. I'm reading Brian Smith's statement. His wife just gave birth, so he's at home. I know. All right, good evening. I am here to raise concerns regarding the proposed change to special area scheduling for the upcoming school year. Music was the key to keeping me minimally motivated in ELA until something clicked, and in 11th grade, I finally excelled on my standardized assessment. My story isn't unique. My career has been serving Title I schools and implementing pull-out band and strings programs. In every situation, the students that enrolled in band and strings scored higher on that year's standardized test than their peers. In August, I found my students at Carver, who had already been enrolled in instrumental music, were growing faster and scoring higher on assessments, had better attendance, and had low to no behavioral incidences. This data matched a recent study that found that students from low SES backgrounds achieved greater when enrolled in music pull-out programs than their peers. This study convincingly showed that music pull-outs have a direct positive impact on these students. My colleagues and I know firsthand the value of music programs to the students we teach. Now, I don't expect my students to become world-class performers. Personally, this isn't why I chose to teach music. My why is that music quiets our soul when our brains need to thrive. If you've ever listened to a child, you know their souls are practically shouting. This is why students in music pull-out programs thrive in other academic areas. Their souls have been quieted to absorb the great teachings of their math and ELA teachers. Students enrolled in band, strings, or chorus do miss some time in ELA and math, but they still have 630 minutes and 405 minutes per week, respectively, to complete their coursework. Music inherently and explicitly teaches critical listening and attention to every detail. These two skills seem to be more and more rare now in the last 25 years that programs and courses that contribute to well-rounded education have been eliminated. After the special area teacher presentation on March 7th, I took away the sentiment that the honest work I have been doing is the number-one problem to education and SNCPS. Music is not the problem in our schools. Legitimate research shows music is a critical part of the solution, not only in ELA and math, but all areas of a child's development. The writers of the Blueprint and AIB explicitly stated that the standards contained within should not alter the need for high-quality fine arts programs needed for a holistic education that leads to well-rounded students. The Blueprint was never intended to reduce music education. The plan proposed on March 7th directly violates the Blueprint by settling for mediocrity in fine arts. My ask to this board is to make it clear that the youngest citizens of St. Mary's County must have high-quality education in every area of our schools. This is why I've bought a home here for my two young children. This is why I don't gripe as a young professional over my taxes. I know this board has always prioritized high-quality, well-rounded education funded by taxpayers such as myself, and that should not change. Thank you.
Allison Kerr, and then TC O'Brien is next.
Good evening. My name is Allison Kerr, and I have taught music in St. Mary's County for 12 years. Of those 12, I've been fortunate to be placed at Mechanicsville Elementary School for the past 10. for the past ten. When I graduated from college twelve years ago, I had my heart set on returning to Southern Maryland to teach music. Born and raised in Calvert County, I dreamed of the day I would be able to join their fine arts department and start my career. Unfortunately, there were no music positions available in Calver in 2013, so I began to apply to other counties. When I got the call offering me my first job as an instrumental and general music teacher at Park Hall Elementary, I planned to put in a few years and then jump counties the first chance I got. Somewhere along the way, my plans changed. I'm proud to call myself a member of the Saint Mary's County Fine Arts Teaching Team. What my colleagues do each and every day with their students is nothing short of incredible, and we've got the results to prove that. We've experienced district success at the state, regional, and national levels with our middle and high school ensembles because of the hard work of our secondary teachers and the solid foundation provided by our elementary teachers. We are truly fortunate to have a county that prioritizes providing our youngest learners with opportunities to explore multiple ensembles and find something they truly enjoy before focusing on it at the secondary level. I cannot say the same is true for our neighboring counties, providing such a wide variety of experiences nor the amount of time in general music classes to build these necessary musical skills before applying them in an ensemble experience. I have always hoped Mechanicsville would be my forever school, and I have some students here tonight that are twinning with me. It's a wonderful place where the fine and performing arts don't simply exist, they thrive. I pass by four other schools on my commute to school each and every day, but I choose to stay in Saint Mary's because of the commitment that has always been demonstrated to giving our youngest students the best possible musical experiences. Thank you for supporting our fine arts teachers to provide these opportunities for so many years and for working with us in the years to come as we come together to find solutions for all students. Thank you.
And then after Ms. O'Brien, we have Chris Hayden.
Good evening. My name is TC O'Brien. I am a retired music educator and the founder and artistic director of the new Southern Maryland Music Nonprofit, Hope in Harmony. In my family, we are proud to say we have three generations of music educators. Unfortunately, over my lifetime, I've witnessed the cyclical nature of budget cuts and their direct impact and threat to music and the arts in the schools. First, my mom, during her tenure as an elementary music teacher in PG County, she was only kept because she had twenty-five years of service. Everyone under her was cut. During my tenure in Charles County, we had threats again, and now with my daughter, a third-generation music educator here in Saint Mary's County, the cycle comes around again. Why is it that music and the related arts always become one of the first targets in the wake of budget cuts? What will it take for everyone to recognize the intrinsic and extrinsic value of the arts in the life of every child and do what it takes to increase the experiences, not diminish them? Being able to explore as many options as possible is key to the child's success. Making a child choose a path so young when they don't have the reasoning power to know what's best for them without any experience is like asking them to bake a cake without all the ingredients. Our grandson couldn't wait to be in band and play the trumpet. He also loved to sing, and his fourth and fifth-grade year, he had the opportunity to sing in the choir and play in the band. Surprisingly to us, he chose to pursue choir in middle school, a path he would have never explored if he had only one choice in elementary school. For most children, school is the only place of exploration in the arts. Unlike sports, opportunities to engage in a variety of community, music, and arts programs for exploration and growth is almost nonexistent. This is why exposure to the arts and offering options is so critical. By limiting the options, we are truly doing, are we truly doing what's best for kids? Saint Mary's County has always produced outstanding student performers and programs that are recognized as some of the absolute best in the state. Do you know that two of your music teachers had the honor of presenting sessions at the recent Maryland Music Educators State Conference? That's because Saint Mary's is known for consistently doing great things and sets the bar high for other counties to follow. What bar will you all set now? Thank you for listening with an open mind. Thank you.
Okay, after Ms. Hayden, we have Bethany Alvey.
My name is Christine Hayden, and I was asked to read this letter written by a parent and colleague to share the impact that music has had on her children and why it's so crucial that all students have access to all musical opportunities. My son James is a perfect example of how music can transform a student's academic journey. For years, James struggled with reading. It was always a fight to get him to want to pick up a book. Reading was a challenge that weighed on him all the way until fourth grade, when he joined the school band and started playing percussion. Something about learning rhythm, counting beats, and reading music unlocked a part of his brain. Almost overnight, his confidence soared. His reading skills improved dramatically, and his love for books, something I once feared would never come, finally flourished. His band teacher is among the several on the chopping block. Today, in middle school, James is excelling in accelerated courses and earning straight ace. My daughter Madison had the privilege of participating in strings, band, and chorus in elementary school. She was awarded the opportunity to explore all of these music programs and decide what was the best fit for her before middle school. She participated in chorus and band simultaneously in fourth and fifth grade, a decision that was allowed to be made by our family, not decided for her by central office members who do not know the students they're making decisions for. Today, she still carries her love for singing in church and playing the clarinet as a seventh grader. The foundation that music provided her in discipline, creativity, and teamwork has helped her succeed in all areas of her education. And yet, despite these incredible success stories, my youngest daughter Ellie may not have these same opportunities. The current proposal from Central Office would strip away the very programs that have helped students like James and Madison thrive. Music is not an extracurricular luxury. It is an essential part of a well-rounded education. It enhances cognitive development, improves academic performance, and fosters social connections and builds confidence. The research is clear, and the proof is in the stories of students like my children. While I know that you're not choosing to take music completely out of schools, the decision being considered will take away from what these incredible teachers have the capacity to provide, not just in music but across the board for specials. It also removes the time that teachers have to create magical experiences for their students, such as grade-level performances, specialized assemblies, and after-school programs, experiences that will be remembered for years and encourage their love of school. By making a decision that students in elementary school can only select one type of music to study, you are deciding to take even more opportunities away from students. The experience that my older two children received allowed them to try different forms of music in elementary school so that they were prepared to make a choice of one fine art in middle school. How will students know what truly interests them if they're not awarded the ability to try it all? So I ask you, what happens to the next James, the next Madison, the next child who just needs that one opportunity to unlock their potential? Are we willing to deny them the chance to comply because we fail to see the value of music education? I urge you to reconsider the choices being made. Our children deserve better. Ellie deserves better. Every child in this district deserves the same opportunities to learn, grow, and succeed. Let's look at these students as much as more than a test score. Let's invest in their future by keeping music in our schools. And by the way, I want that little one in my choir one day. Let's make this happen.
Bethany Alvey, and then I assume Steve, Rachel, and Ethan Howell are all together? Okay, you guys are up next.
Good evening, board members. My name is Bethany Alvey, and I am grateful for the opportunity to stand before you during Music in Our Schools Month. This evening, I want to celebrate the impact that music in Saint Mary's County public schools has had on my life. I was born here in Saint Mary's County, and I attended Lenner Town Elementary, Middle, and High School. When I finally made it to LHS to work with Ms. Eunice Leopold, I got to try for all the groups I remember watching when I was little, Varsity Chorus, and Jazz Tones, and Ladies Fair. And then Ms. Leopold fell ill and passed in my sophomore year. While we did have long-term subs to help us, the larger impression on me at the time was that it was up to us to keep working, to keep going. We had a legacy that we were sustaining through transition and grief. I had one goal in the mind at the time, to get a degree in music education and come back to Saint Mary's County to teach. I wanted to be part of the musical culture here. I finished my music ed degree at Towson and accepted the choral director position at Great Mills High School. And at the time, the county set a goal for teachers to be highly qualified, get your masters, or be in progress for it by year five. So after my fourth year with this requirement in mind, I left to get my masters in choral conducting from Temple University, and then my doctorate in choral conducting from the Frost School of Music, University of Miami. From there, I took a position as director of choral activities at Fresno Pacific University in Central California. During my academic travels, I came across many public school districts, and I began to wonder, was all the affection and admiration that I have for the music program here in Saint Mary's just childhood rose-colored glasses? When COVID hit, my husband and I were considering where we really wanted to be, and the community in Saint Mary's County is what brought us home. And before we landed in April twenty twenty-three, I already had friends reaching out to me to collaborate on music projects. I found I did not make it up. We have something rare and wonderful, something that deserves to be protected and nurtured, empowered, and resourced, and the root of it begins in our schools. Our students go on to perform at the highest levels in our nation as recording artists, Broadway and opera performers, producers, conductors, and yes, teachers. Raw talent is not the method here. Work ethic, an attitude of service, dedication, creativity, and collegiality are what makes this county's music program exemplary. National and state policies will come and go, and I hope that this county never forgets its roots. My personal request to you, board members, is that you work with the incredible music and arts faculty available to you to find solutions for our current challenges that preserve the superlative music education SMCPS provides our students. Thank you, and happy Music in Our Schools Month.
Are you the only one speaking, or the other?
They're speaking as well.
Okay, all right. And then after the Howell family, then we have Ava and Benjamin Parker, which I'm going to also assume are together. So, okay.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Stephen C. Howell. I'm here to echo the message of Dr. Alvey in asking the Board of Education that as you seek to determine a curriculum balance for our children, to please include in that decision process those who know these children best, their parents and the educators who are in the classroom with these children every day. I'm an associate research engineer at the University of Maryland with a PhD in physics and also someone that has been diagnosed with Attention Deficit Hyperactive Disorder. Reflecting on my own education, I attribute my success, despite the challenges from my neurodiversity, to the diverse coursework I enrolled in to include science, mathematics, and also music and physical education. I feel my experiences provide a strong example of how these seemingly unrelated topics of music and PE play a critical role in a student's success in mathematics and science, particularly for those who are neurodivergent. Throughout high school, I was in the top of the class in specific courses such as Advanced Placement, Calculus, Physics, and Biology, but I offset these technically challenging courses by also trying out and being selected to perform with my high school symphonic band and ballroom dance company. Later, while pursuing a bachelor's in physics with a minor in mathematics, I similarly balanced these technical studies with a minor in ballroom dance and was part of the Brigham Young University Ballroom Dance Company, a prestigious collegiate dance program that has achieved international acclaim, winning multiple U.S. and World Formation Championships. While it was logistically challenging to be part of a time-intensive performing arts company while also managing a heavy STEM course load, the seemingly unrelated dance coursework and training enhanced my performance in my other courses. I remember vividly study sessions where I struggled for hours to complete advanced mathematics and physics problems, then being interrupted by scheduled dance rehearsals, only to return to the problems I had previously struggled with to find that they now made sense. Contrasting my undergraduate experience and high school experience, while a PhD student, I did not have these same extracurricular activities, and for the first time in my life, I struggled with depression. In hindsight, I've learned that the positive impact I experienced through my high school and undergraduate studies is what researchers refer to as the incubation effect, where cognitive brakes enhance problem-solving abilities. Further, there's a host of research that has shown that physical activities and the study of music has a strong, significant, positive impact on cognitive function, pattern recognition, reducing stress and depression, improving mood, creative thinking, all of which directly increase students' performance in math and science, especially for the neurodivergent like myself. I ask this board, as you take on the challenge of determining the curriculum balance between STEM and the musics and arts and PE and all the other programs, to carefully consider the positive impact these various programs have toward mathematics, science, and the other STEM fields, especially for those who struggle with executive function. As you seek a solution, please include those who know the impacted children the most, the parents and the educators who are in the classroom with these students every day. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Howell. I'm a mother of five, I was one of them, and my family and I have been residents of Saint Mary's County since two thousand and seventeen. I would like to share what a positive impact the music and specials program from this county has been for me and my family, and how important it is to us that it is preserved and protected. Music has been a big part of my life personally. I grew up in Howard County, Maryland, and much like Saint Mary's County, the public school system provided many opportunities to participate in the music and arts. I participated as much as I possibly could in music classes as well as other programs, which laid an important foundation for me. Growing up, I was involved not only with not only a separate music and art class through eighth grade, but I participated in many optional music programs, often at the same time, as well as participating in varsity sports and graduating as a member of the National Honor Society. The lessons I learned from being a part of sports and musical groups as a child and teenager have shaped me into who I am today. They provided me with an outlet for creativity, a way to express myself emotionally, helped me gain a sense of belonging, boosted my self-esteem and confidence, which is tough as a six-foot freshman, and to understand the value, to understand the value of teamwork. Most of all, it gave me a sense of joy, a joy that I revisit again and again. I sometimes joke that my involvement in school is what prepared me for motherhood. It is how I learned how to have fun while doing hard work, to have patience, discipline, practice time management, and define beauty in imperfections. These are lessons I want to pass on to my children. When we moved to this county, we were excited to learn about the positive feedback regarding our public schools and its programs. My oldest is in sixth grade, and so far, my family has participated in strings, choir, band, Battle of the Books, the Running Club, math team, the county art show, GT Math, GT Reading, Anchored for Life, the school musical, and the school talent show. They've loved their experiences so far and have developed such beautiful relationships with other classmates in these special programs, as well as the teachers who see them year after year, growing in these special skills. Sometimes my children select a class not because they necessarily know what they want to pursue, but because they want to learn more from the distinguished and talented teachers. I love that they are, that there are a variety of programs to give my children the freedom to choose and explore different avenues of self-expression. There's just no substitute for the experiences that these programs can provide. I encourage the board to consider these special and musical programs as essential components of a comprehensive, high-quality education. I look forward to seeing how we can continue to support and enrich the educational experiences of all students in Saint Mary's County. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ethan Howell. I'm in fourth grade at Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. I have lived in Saint Mary's County since I was two years old. Music is a big part of my life. I've been playing the violin privately for seven years now, but last year was the first time I had the chance to be a part of a strings ensemble offered at my school. I was excited to finally play in a group. I've also, I also have been watching my parents participate in community theater the past five years, and watching them has made me want to be a part of it, too. In one of the shows my parents did, Dr. Alvey was the music director. My dad told me that- My dad told me that I was lucky to have her as my music teacher at school because she knows so much about music. He said, he also said that she has helped him improve his singing more than anyone else. What my dad said, maybe you want to join, want to have the same opportunity in singing, so I decided to join the school chorus. By the time I started fourth grade, I had already had the chance to be in two summer musicals at the local community theater. I got to know so many amazing musicians in the pit band as well as on stage. And I learned that many of them teach music or theater in the public schools. That made me want to play in a band so that, so that by the time I was in high school, I could hopefully be in one of their programs, even though I had to, I opt out of strings this year. I was excited that I could be in both band and choir. It has been a really great experience so far. One more thing, even though I had excellent teachers in second grade and even though I tested way above average in reading and math, for personal reasons, I was having a really tough time in school. With the help of many people, including my involvement in music and arts, third grade and fourth grade have been much better for me. I enjoy school a lot more and I really like being involved. To the county's Board of Education, please help protect these specials and musical programs for me and for all of the other students in St. Mary's County. Thank you.
Ava and Benjamin Parker, and then after that, we have Andrea Windsor.
Hi, my name is Ava and I'm in sixth grade STEM. I'm here to address the proposed cuts in St. Mary's County public schools. I knew how to come and speak on behalf of my former teachers and current elementary students. Music class improves not only your skills when playing an instrument, but your academic grade overall. An article by National Library Medicine says that musical training has recently gained additional interest in increasing neuroscientific research demonstrates its positive effects on brain development. For example, children who undergo musical training have better verbal memory, second language pronunciation accuracy, reading ability, and active functions. I remember my third, fifth grade strings teacher, Ms. Harden, and the music I sang in honors course in fifth grade with Ms. Kerr. I love the opportunity to discover the path I want to take in the arts. And to take this away from other students would be suppressing a major outlet. My music teacher, Ms. Kerr, provided me with the opportunity to come to school early and sing in advanced choir. Art class was an escape, and my magical art teacher, Ms. Patton, made sure of that. Our media teacher, Ms. Smith, inspired my love of books, and with her help, I joined the Battle of the Books. These amazing teachers helped me, helped inspire me to join STEM. And these memories are what made my elementary experience so special, not only because I enjoyed my time with them, but because they helped me discover my gift with choir. I know that without these resources, I would not have figured out what I like to do. And I hope you think of the elementary students as not only today, but our tomorrow. I hope you will take these things into account, and thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ben. I'm in fourth grade. I'm enrolled in two chorus classes before school with my amazing music teacher, Ms. Kerr. I also play the trumpet with her. If these proposed cuts come true, I'll be forced to choose between band and choir. I love band because of the way me and my friends jam to the music and the way the notes sound. It really has been a fun experience. Choir means relaxing and being a part of an accepting group. It opens up the door for more opportunities such as singing at a Blue Crops baseball game. I have a little brother in kindergarten who, if the proposed cuts are accepted, will not be able to enjoy singing with the choir and playing in band like I do. He will not have the experience of a lifetime that means so much to me. Please take this into account and thank you for your time.
Andrea Windsor, and then after that, Ainsley Dill.
So as I've been sitting here, I've discovered that St. Mary's County really does do things differently. My name is Andy Windsor. I have roots so deep in St. Mary's County, you probably trip over them on the sidewalk. I'm a elementary school teacher. I am in my sixth year teaching in Charles County. And I am also a parent of a future St. Mary's County student. So when one of my former parents shared that this was a topic of discussion, I decided to come in solidarity, but also to express my concern for my little girl who dances and sings in the living room every night and her ability to be able to do those things. So as you've heard, there's a plethora of research that's been conducted over the past few decades about the benefits of music, the arts, PE, any kind of specials, and their benefits to learners in the long term. In my own experience, for my master's degree, I had to do a lot of research about how music and reading coincide. And music is very much foundational for early literacy development on its own. Like, think about it. Imagine trying to remember the alphabet without the alphabet song. Because let me tell you, that's how my daughter remembers it when she does her homework. Songs, chants, nursery rhymes, finger plays, church music, music's in every single step of the culture. Learning the basic skills in elementary school provides the opportunities for students to grow and become those performers on TV. So many famous performers for starting in elementary school. So that's what I always tell my students whenever they're like, well, why does music matter? Because think about it. It's a foundation and it helps. It helps with emotions. It helps build social skills, teamwork. PE does it too. They build social skills, teamwork, hand-eye coordination, gross motor skills, all of these things that our children might be lacking from sitting in a chair and listening to that curriculum unit again. These are small chunks of time that they are using to get all of that growth emotionally, socially, and be able to come functioning and successful adults. In my time as a music educator, I've met my share of students and families who think that specials are just specials. And I've also seen students whose lives have been enriched, enhanced, and saved by having these places to go. Some of the kids that I work with at my school have had more trauma in their little lives than I work with pre-K to five than I will ever have in my entire lifetime, and I know it. And seeing those kids come to me with the biggest smiles in the world and saying, oh, do we have to, when it's time to leave, shows me that I'm making a difference in that forty-five to fifty minutes, depending. And what you're proposing here is similar, I think, to what I do. And it does kind of stink that I get to see my kids once every other week, sometimes. To close, I wanted to share something because as they've said, it's Music in Our Schools Month. It's very fitting and ironic that we're all here. So I wanted to share something from a project I did with my kids. The prompt was, "The best part about music is," and they had to finish the sentence. A first grader of mine shared this. "The best part about music is that I get to have fun learning new things. It's my favorite special." That was written by a first grader. That's her exact words. So please consider, if nothing else, involving these wonderful teachers and their incredible program in planning as you're readjusting these things. Thank you.
Ainsley, we have Patricia Parsons or Larson's. I'm not sure which one.
Abby Parsons.
Parsons. There you go.
Hello, my name is Ainsley Dill, and I am part of sixth grade STEM. A change to elementary electives has been proposed in elementary school, forcing children to choose between general music, strings, band, and chorus. Dolphins, but that's a terrible idea. Kids should get the chance to experience it all. Besides, how do people know what they want to do if they don't get a chance to try it all out? And with this new schedule, not only would it confuse the teachers, parents, and students, but it would end up negatively affecting extracurriculars such as talent shows and plays, which students and teachers alike love doing. And as she said before, music and art saves lives, and I can personally prove that. Being able to play an instrument, sing, or even dance provides people with an escape from the world without going to extreme measures. Writing, drawing, all of these are well-known and reliable coping mechanisms. Should we limit access to these opportunities? And is it really the best idea to make young, inexperienced kids choose one elective rather than multiple? Elementary school is like their experimental period, so they know what to choose in middle school and beyond. As you get older, the field of opportunities narrows. In elementary school, you get to try it all out. In middle school, you get to decide which one is your favorite. High school, you decide which one you want to stick with, and in college, you prepare for it to be your career. Young kids need the opportunity to try it all out so they aren't miserable throughout the years. And music is known to improve grades and cognitive skills. So should we really take away general music? Opportunities like all-county orchestra and chorus were offered to me because I had the choice to participate in both chorus and orchestra. All-county band was also offered to band students, but only because they were provided the chance to try out band. I could have participated if I wanted to, but I had the choice to decline. I have one thing that I ask. Consider the whole picture when you are making your decision. Thank you for your time.
After Ms. Parsons, we have Joshua Monday.
Good evening, board members, SMCPS staff, and community stakeholders. My name is Patricia Parsons. I'm a retired teacher and a parent of two former students. My children greatly benefited from the music program, expanded, and improved from elementary through high school. My daughter started with strings and chorus in elementary school. In middle school and high school, she focused her music study in chorus. My son started strings and added chorus music study in elementary school. He continued with strings in middle school and high school, and also had the opportunity to add music composition in high school. My children's love of music was nurtured and enriched at the elementary level. My daughter was in the very first all-county honors strings concert. She was a first grader. At that time, thirty years ago, only a few elementary students, along with middle and high school, performed together to start the building of the strings program we have now in St. Mary's County public schools with honor chorus and honor strings concerts at all three levels of our system. Reducing the number of pull-out opportunities at the elementary level has a number of negative impacts. Students will lose the opportunity to explore the different avenues for music expression and to try all of the arts prior to selecting a focus in middle school. Music has been shown to improve overall academic focus, and sometimes is the sole reason students enthusiastically attend school and where they see their only success. Research from the American Psychological Association and the University of North Carolina-Greensboro has conclusively shown that benefits from music education, benefits from music education on math, STEM, and English classes. Additionally, research has shown the parallels between music and foreign language education. Without any research that reducing music education results in increased academic success, please look at other avenues for cost savings and maintain the current SMCPS arts program. When I was a staff member, it was said to me by a few principals that as long as we did what was right for our students, we were doing the right thing. I asked, is this the right thing for our students to cut these programs, or is it a cost savings measure? Just please do the right thing for our students. Thank you.
On deck is Ellen Fitzgerald.
Hello, I am Joshua Monday. I was born and raised here in St. Mary's County. And it's a community that I've always treasured, has been close to my heart. And I'm here because I've heard through my friends that of the proposed reduction of the, in the schedules for PE and music. And the reason I was told was interrupting instruction time. And that's odd to me because school's never just been about grades and teaching. It's about the communities that kids form and the places where they can interact each other and socialize. It has, the school has a duty to nurture children, which is more than just those grades. It's to show them joy and happiness and passion and encourage their creativity and curiosity. It's not just to teach them to follow instructions. School is to help teach kids to discover themselves as much as it is to inform how they can learn. Music and PE are fundamental to how I discovered myself and who I am today. Because games taught me how to collaborate and move around quickly and not get lost thinking in my head. And it also taught me to work with people I didn't like because, wouldn't you know it, winning a game is a very good motivator for making friends with people you don't like. And music taught me how to process my emotions and express myself. Because I've never been good with putting words to my feelings and thoughts, and music helped me find that bridge into figuring out what my thoughts are and how I'm feeling. They are foundational and core to me and who I am, and it's why I even have a job today. Because my job is video editing and music making. And I get to reach millions of people and bring them joy and inspire them too. I get messages fairly frequently from these children and young adults that my work is making them aspire to more. And without music and PE and the wonderful teachers I was given, I would not be who I am today. I don't know the solution to these problems. I'm not a teacher. I'm not an administrator. But this room is full of them, including you guys. And you guys can empower, you board, can empower these teachers and administrators to make changes for the better. So instead of telling you guys what to do, I wouldn't know what to do. I'll just make my plea. Please, for the sake of children in school who are struggling, don't take away what they love in the name of test scores. That will not make them happier or improve their grades. Instead, protect their spaces that they have, where they can experience joy, where they can play and engage with each other in community and in ways that will help them grow. I had that, and I want other children to have that as well. Thank you.
After Ms. Fitzgerald is George Winslow.
Hello, my name is Ellen Fitzgerald. I'm the mother of two recent Great Mills High School graduates and two current Great Mills students. I'm also a former SMCPS special education teacher, substitute teacher, ISIC monitor. I'm proud to serve both textbook advising and comprehensive plan committees, as well as a volunteer in numerous roles and chaperone for many phenomenal field trips during my fifteen years as an SMCPS parent. My goal in speaking today is to demonstrate thanks to the Board of Education for its support of the music education department at SMCPS. My youngest child is a freshman and will be joining me here tonight, except that he has marching band clinic, and you don't miss marching band. So I'm speaking for both him and myself. In kindergarten, Mr. Early, who spoke earlier, pulled my son aside during music class, hoping he would be the student with the enthusiasm, excuse me, to run across the stage during a holiday concert and yell pumpkin pie at just the right moment. My son is now a private student of Mr. Early's, happy to return for a second time, having taken up a new instrument. Thank you to Mr. Early for seeing that enthusiasm. It's a memory we cherish. My son joined band as a fourth grader at LPEES as COVID hit and the world seemingly shut down. Mrs. Baker somehow managed to continue band instruction. I can't explain or even begin to comprehend the magic that Mrs. Baker must possess to be able to reach through a lagging Chromebook and guide a child through the rigors of music instruction. This instruction provided my son with structure, focus, motivation, and the outlet he so desperately needed. At Spring Ridge, Mr. G continued this tradition of compassionate structure, guidance, and providing a home for my aspiring percussionist. For three years, my son worked with Mr. G. We all may remember that middle school is hard, really hard. The opportunities provided by Mrs. Baker and then nurtured by Mr. G brought my son through some very tough middle school years and allowed him to develop the confidence to keep pushing for growth on his musical path as well as in his STEM Academy curriculum. I believe the idea that musical programs are a detractor from core subjects is misguided. Often, the confidence, rigor, and work ethic that can be so beautifully attained through musical education allows the success in core subjects. For many, music, band, and strings are the places For many, music, band, and strings are the places students find success, passion, and value. Limiting exposure to those opportunities would limit their access for building confidence, building a drive for, and developing leadership roles that directly impact their academic success. For some special education students, music class is the opportunity to enthusiastically interact with and experience general education curriculum with their grade-level peers. No one can dispute the value of core subjects in elementary instruction. I would instead offer, instead of limiting access to musical education enrichment, the board provide alternate support to classroom teachers in the ways they request. Teachers obviously know their students, and they are well-equipped to decide what educational supports their students most need. Thank you to the music educators that have guided the direction of my son's life in ways his father and I couldn't have, and thank you to the board for this opportunity.
After Mr. Winslow, who's up next, we have Trista Hutchinson. How are you?
Good evening. I usually start with hello. My name is George Winslow, and I have taught in this county forty-four years, and I had ten years in New York State before that. So I think I know St. Mary's and the good old boys very well. Yes, and so do these people here. Fighting for what you have already understood is a very quality, higher-quality music program than most people are accustomed to. And you started it. Well, you didn't, but somebody in your chair started it fifty years ago. And you've kept it going. And all these people yelling and screaming at you to do what you're supposed to do, and you'll do it. And you still will go to the fancy shows that the jazz guys put on, and ladies, by the way. And the elementary's programs, you have to sit through those, just like I have had to. And it gets better in middle school. They still know how to put two words together, maybe. And then in high school, they know the whole sentence. I hope that Mary Washington still is going to the schools and reading, and she even dresses up. And it's great to have somebody are in to the Board of Education. That's great.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you still go, because I saw you when I was, I was thirty years. And Ms. Ellen, I've seen you at many concerts, and many of you have all these concerts. They're terrific. They're not boring, and they're not all perfect, but we're trying. It's wonderful. Look what you've started and kept going. How can you possibly not keep it going? I have no idea, and I'm glad I'm not in your seat right now, because the arts are important. The elementary program, like I said, they might put two words together. By the time they're fifth grade, they get to middle school, oh, you don't want to teach in middle school. But we have to anyway. And by the way, they get in high school. It's great. They're doing something that they want to do, and you've helped them. That's the whole deal, and that's why we're here. We want you to help them. Not getting away, it's like, it's like being on a train. Once you start it, it's awfully hard to keep going. It's awfully hard to stop it. And of course, you can derail it if you want to. That's fairly easy. But I'll tell you a little secret I've learned in fifty years. You can't go back. If once you stop it, or derail, or do something, you can't get it back. Look what COVID did. We can't go back to where we were, as much as I'd like to. We can't do that anymore. Decide, you can't go back. If you do something silly and it doesn't work, although it might work. But we've been throwing money at education for hundreds of years, and it hasn't worked yet. So let's try what these ladies and gentlemen have prompted you to say, to do, and that is, keep up the good work. Keep the plan, baby. Keep going.
All right, thank you very much.
We appreciate it. No matter what you think they said, they still have your best interest at heart. And we love you anyway, but you know how that goes. It's not without its little things in the road.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
After Ms. Hutchinson, we have Kylie Rona.
Good evening, board and everybody here. My name is Trista Hutchinson. I am not only a parent, but I have been a substitute teacher for Ms. Chahansky Giannuzzi for the last thirty years. I do do other subbing, but primarily at the middle school level, so you can appreciate the guts I have. But yeah, I'm more nervous now. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice law enforcement. I have a minor studying in accounting, and I have a master's in business administration. I left my career to be a stay-at-home mom when my son was born almost seventeen years ago, and was looking for something to do with my time now that he was in middle school and, you know, I suddenly had all this free time. I reached out to Ms. Chahansky and asked her, could she use somebody who had some music experience in her classroom when she wasn't there? Or was she more possessive of her program? And she resoundly said, no, I would love somebody. So a little bit of my music experience. It has been around, you know, part of my life since day one. I was so antsy to start playing an instrument that in third grade, my dad started teaching me how to play his high school trumpet. Although our school district had a really good music program in West Fargo, North Dakota, we didn't start band until sixth grade. But I really wanted to play flute, so I played trumpet on my own until I could play flute. We moved a couple times, fast forward to high school. Registering, we moved right before I started freshman year. And in registration process, they asked, what extracurricular activities do you do? Well, I kind of played volleyball, but I also played flute. They were so excited because they just got a new band director. Next thing I know, next day, I was in the middle of band camp in August on a hot tarmac in a parking lot in the back of our school in Ohio. I thought about quitting after the first couple days, because, oh my goodness. But I didn't. I stuck it out, and that was the best decision I've ever made. I play multiple instruments. Not only do I play flute and trumpet, I play mellifone, which is a marching French horn, play French horn, and unofficially clarinet and saxophone, and the all-feared recorder, because we all had to learn it too. But I love it. Music saved me. It was my safe space. Moving into an area, as a freshman, it's scary. First day of school, I had no idea how to get to the gym. But I found a friendly face that I recognized from the previous week and a half. He was a senior. So you can imagine a freshman having enough guts to go up to a senior to say, how do I get to the gym? I know where it is on the outside, but where do I go inside? And that, like I said, it was my safe space. It helped me. I didn't have a great relationship with my mom. But that's what saved me. So please, don't. Oh, I should also say, my son is also in band. He started as cello in third grade. Wasn't for him, he switched to saxophone. He's been in all the all-county bands. He was a student of Ms. Chahansky's. He's been in all-county jazz. He was in tri-county. He'll be in the all-county jazz next month as the only tenor saxophone, and hopefully with his solo like he had last night. If he didn't have that opportunity, which I was very thankful you guys had for them in the elementary school, you know, it's made him what he is today. So thank you very much.
All right, after Ms. Rona, we have Tammy Payne, and then Katie Folger.
Well, I had something written out, but I think you've heard enough of the same statistics. You know the statistics. You know the studies. I am the mother of a, give him four more years, Greenview Knowles student, and he is the son of musicians. And music, much like previously heard, saved my life. I started, my dad also played trumpet. I played trumpet in third grade. I joined orchestra. I was in choir. I'm originally from Pennsylvania. We moved in middle school, which you all know, middle school. I went from a graduating class of three hundred to a graduating class of eighty, who had all been together since preschool, and I was the odd one out. Had I not had my high school band director, had I not had my middle school band director, my choir director, my theater directors, I don't know that my son would be here, because I don't know that I would be here. Taking away this opportunity from these kids is wrong. And I want you to ask yourself why the arts and music are always the first on the chopping block. When we were moving from PG County, I looked at where we wanted to buy a house. Where could we afford to buy a house first? But also, we wanted to have kids. Where were my kids going to go to school? And that music program that everyone has been talking about is why we bought a house in St. Mary's County, because we wanted that for our kids. My husband is a bagpiper, is a percussionist. I was a percussionist. I was a violinist. I played sax. We want that for our kids. I want my tax dollars to go to education, to go to programming for children. And I want you, again, if I cannot stress anything else, to ask why it is always music that is first on the chopping block. In nineteen sixty-seven, the Tanglewood Symposium brought together sociologists, scientists, labor leaders, educators, representatives of corporations, musicians, and other people involved with other aspects of music. And in their declaration, I will leave you with this. They said, of particular importance, the declaration called for music to be placed in the core of the school curriculum, not on the sidelines, and certainly not cut. Thank you.
So while I'm a product of this county and band and chorus, and definitely not strings. I am a proud parent of children that went through this system, and I started with Ruth Gray. And she was my first-grade band teacher, and she was my kid's band teacher. And I've looked at what she put out there and what she did, and how she achieved, and how she got me to do things I never thought I would do. In college, I got to go play with the principal flatus of the Pittsburgh Symphony, all because of Ruth. And I'm so excited to have a future kindergartner this year as a grandson who wants to play the instruments that are all around my house. And you would have to understand, we have about twenty instruments, and they try them, and there are three and there are five, and it's bad, but we still let them try. And they sing, and they love to sing. I don't understand. I just don't understand. I'm not here as an employee, while I am one, but I will bring this to you. As a history teacher, opportunity cost is opportunity lost. And your opportunity cost is what are you giving up? And you aren't giving up anything. These kids are giving up choices, and that's the problem. Pure and simple, that is the problem. And so we need to think about, what is the opportunity lost? Yes, these teachers, you've offered them education that they could get retrained. That's not where their gift is. And if that's not where their gift is, then it's going to be tough to sell them on it. And I ask that you think about what opportunity is being lost. Because for me, it's heartbreaking to have a future kindergartner having to choose. Why? I don't understand.
There's a real trooper hanging in there, not saying a peep, truly. I think I'm the last one, so apologies. But my name is Katie Folger. I grew up in Charles County. I made the trek down to Reichen every day as a high school, and I live in this county with my husband, who never left his zip code. We live in Mechanicsville. To set the tone, maybe some credibility, I was in band. In my school years, I eventually learned to play about seven instruments, a lot of them self-taught. I wrote original music. I was part of an accelerated science program. I completed AP and honors courses, won service awards at graduation I didn't know about beforehand, and I was selected by teachers for special programs, all the fun stuff, more, whatever. Now, I own two residential properties in the county, and a commercial property here, and a business that will be opening inside of that building that I've spent the last two years renovating in downtown Mundertown in the middle of the square. We've vitalized in that area. So also, I know you guys love it. We love it, right? Everybody here is in love with the county, for the most part, right? That's why we're here. That's why we haven't left yet. That's why we're showing up. I have two kids, and one attends Letty Dent right now. My daughter's a year younger and is currently in private school for pre-K. And we're actually choosing to pull her out and put her in Letty Dent next year, not because of money or faith or any of that sort of stuff, right? But because of the approach that you guys provide. So don't take anything I say poorly. It turns out I'm a big fan. So I recognize it's not easy for you all to come together. I've served on boards. I serve on a board now. We're all passionate about these things, and it's even tougher to bring solutions to other people, right? But you guys show up month after month, and you're putting in the work that a lot of people are not willing to do or not willing to sit down and understand. So really, thank you, guys. I had a section here I'm going to skip over, because a lot of it was mentioned by other people. I don't think I have to cover why the specials matter at this point. But just adding in, limiting children to the same core instruction for their first eight years, we cannot then set reasonable expectations for them in their last four years to do things like community service, outreach and engagement, things like that, discerning what they actually want to do for their future. So building those skills are really coming early on development. But again, you guys know that. You're all in education, right? So I had something in here from Harvard about brains being built over time, blah, 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 synapses. Again, you guys know that stuff. So all of these things are learned through play, through movement, creative expression. These things are essential in the childhood development. And when we're removing the opportunities for that, we are essentially limiting the potential of their future, because if those groups are not put in now, they're not going to be there. And if they are there, it's going to take them so much longer to build them later on in life. My next point was the parent-child connection, since I guess I'm here as a parent. As we know, it's so integral. It's so important, whether it's a caregiver, guardian, all those things. Sorry, I'm really going to try to go faster. So when they're coming to parents with things like a piece of artwork that they made, a library book that they picked out that day, and they ask the parent to read it to them, they are in a music or band concert, and they ask the parent to come, what they're doing is they're asking the question over and over again, am I loved? Am I safe? Am I seen? Right? So children don't know how to say these words out loud. This is how they do it. So if they're not getting those things in class to then come home and share with us, you're taking away those opportunities for the child to ask and then be answered, yes, I'm loved, by their parents. So that's super important. One thing I had, the last thing I had, was taking consideration that for a lot of children, this is their only reprieve from an abusive or otherwise unpleasant home life. The burden this decision may have on the school system, if we're talking about budget. Counseling services are probably going to go up. Things like children who have special education services, I mean, you guys talked about in the last meeting how that was the one thing that, like, they really have cut out, and we know in the last month of news, they're probably going to continue cutting out. Other people have talked about that relation, so I'm not going to hone in too much on that. But with the lack of funding in this area, the students are already going to be seeing a reduction in these services. Let's not add on to it. But with that being said, I don't believe in complaining without offering a solution. A few ideas I had, some of them I've already mentioned, totally going to skip over those. Analyzing attendance rate, you said in the last meeting that that's like full stop, number one. Got to get them in the seat, right? Cutting these things- Cutting these things out, it's going to affect it. And if we look back at the data that we already have, we don't have to go do new data studies, we don't have to go hire consultants, look at the data we have. Other kids that are only in band, are those attendance rates higher than the average for that school? Just a suggestion. But the good news is that each member on this board is here for a reason, and I believe that all of you want to do the right thing. And sometimes, an idea sounds really good on paper, it sounds really good in a closed room with like five people in it. But then when we get out into public and we try to practice it, we realize it's not. And this is the opportunity for refinement. So, I really hope that you guys don't take this as criticism, but an opportunity for collaboration, and calibrating the wheel a little bit, right? And, um, the things that you guys do for our young children, you may never see the compounding effect of. They may leave and move away and do hundreds of amazing things that other people see all the time, and perform random acts of kindness in other states. And you'll never hear about it. And if that's not blind faith, I don't know what is. But if music and librarian specials are taken away or reduced, the rest of the world won't see it either. That's, thank you.
Jenna Eschenbrenner.
Good evening. I'm not here to talk about what everyone else has talked about, but I would like to add to the top that I have two daughters who've graduated, and one is studying production design after nine years of STEM at Savannah College of Art and Design, with all that art basis she had here at St. Mary's County Public Schools. And the other one is studying double major in theater and music in Rhode Island. And that's because of people like Sarah Lurick and the wonderful programs, starting with the Weishams at, at the elementary school level. But tonight, I'm here to speak publicly about a grading decision that adversely impacted my high school students' GPA and transcript. To begin, it's critical to note that our family has a great deal of respect for teachers, and we are grateful for the incredible education our children have been given during their time here at SMCPS. We believe that grades are earned, not given away freely, and that hard work should be rewarded. While our student was given a C in the AP English class in question, they actually earned a B. Why? Because teachers have great authority over their grade books. Including the authority to cut the weight of a graded assignment in half, with zero visibility in school G, and zero regard for lowering the student's grade when they have earned a perfect score. When this was done to our student, who scored a perfect ten out of ten on the one assignment in question, cutting the weight in half lowered their final grade from a seventy-nine point six B to a seventy-nine point four five C. It's simple math. But the adverse impact of cutting weights versus the equitable approach of curving a grade is not understood by all teachers. When questioned about the cut in weight, the rationale provided to us was that many of the students performed very poorly. So, they quote, "Made the factor zero point five, so that a zero or lower score did not tank their grade so close to the end of the year, with very little time for recovery." The irony is twofold. First, it actually did tank our students' grade by lowering the B to a high C for a final grade. And two, when we pulled the grade data of this particular assignment through a Freedom of Information Act request, we found that ninety-one out of ninety-four students scored a perfect ten out of ten. Two students scored eight out of ten, and one student scored a zero on this exact assignment. Despite the written assertion in an email dated June fifteenth that many of the students performed very poorly on this exact assignment, ninety-seven percent of the students scored perfectly. The confounding grading decision was upheld by the chief academic officer, the former deputy superintendent of schools, U, the local board of education, and ultimately, the Maryland Board of Education. Because, as stated before, teachers have great authority over their grade book. Student success was not considered a factor, only of the authority a teacher has over their grade book, making it obvious that the current grading policy needs to be changed. Thankfully, the Maryland State Board of Education concurred by issuing a note in their decision, stating that they are quote, "Troubled by the reasons given for changing the weight of the assignment and the communication to the student's family." As a result, we recommend that the local board review its policies and procedures for student grading and assignment weight, educator training on those policies and procedures, and communication with families, end quote. While we know that our students' grade will not be changed, I'm here to ensure that this same thing does not happen to other students, and to hold the local board accountable. I'm here to ensure that you take action based on the state board's recommendation to review current grading policy that allows teachers to harm student grades with zero accountability. I'm here to ensure that you take accountability for your confounding response to our appeal, which blindly backed the teacher at the expense of your most important stakeholders, your students. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
I did have a gentleman that asked if he could be included, and I figured since we're already here, it's eight fifteen.
Do you want to state your name?
Sure.
We can have you.
Your name is Richard Lord?
Yep. Hit the microphone there. If you can be here with us until eight fifteen before we start our meeting, then certainly have your say, sir.
I am Richard Lord. I'm with spouse Nancy Zierfoss. Nancy and I are both retired federal executives, and we chose to live in St. Mary's County where we could have waterfront property. I, um, I've, I've tried to give back to St. Mary's County as a Nancy. Nancy is a cast of volunteer in St. Mary's County. Plus, she has a classic rock band that this past year has played at the Port of Leonardtown Winery a couple of times, and also at the Oyster Festival this last year. I've served as the chairman of the Tri-County Community Action Committee down here, and also for four years as chairman of the Blessing the Fleet. So, we've tried to give back. You know, Nancy has a PhD in public policy and management from the Ohio State University. And I have the degree of Master of Public Administration in PA from the Brigham and University Romney Institute of Public Service and Ethics. The Romney Institute of Public Service and Ethics. You may see where I'm going with this. In my opinion, in trying to conduct myself, my personal life and professional life, with a Romney sense of ethics has not always set well with the, some of the people I interacted with. And I would very much encourage the school district, if it doesn't teach a course in ethics, to do so. To certainly have a symposium ethics, where every student is required to take a course in ethics. Nancy and I would be pleased to conduct a, volunteer to conduct a symposium if you like. But I would strongly recommend, I mean, if you've seen how Mitt Romney has conducted himself and the trouble that's gotten himself into, it would be well for, for your students to, to have, have some kind of classwork in, in ethics. Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Personnel, teachers, there are none. Personnel, administrative and supervisory, on-call, inspection, maintenance, repair, and installation of physical education facilities, equipment leechers and stadium seating, TJ Distributors Incorporated, abatement and remediation services, contract RFP, SMCPS twenty twenty-five MAAR, and information, Department of Information Technology IT security purchase. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Oh, there's in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have no action items this evening. We have two informational items. The first one is the teacher pipeline update. And then the second one is the elementary special area scheduling change proposal that's been referenced repeatedly during the public comment. Everyone would like to stick around. So, Dr. Marr and Dr. Farrell, somewhere.
They were in a, oh, there they are, they were watching. They were watching in a remote location.
So, I'm being, we're joined here with Dr. Farrell and Ms. Lurick to talk about the teacher pipeline. We've certainly heard a number of comments about the budget and how that's going to impact staffing. And certainly, one of the things that we're always going to need is good teachers. And so, as we look to future teachers, we wanted to share a little bit of information about the teacher pipeline and what we're doing in St. Mary's County Public Schools, as well as across the Southern Maryland region, to build out the teacher pipeline. Across the state of Maryland, we have about sixty thousand teachers. Four thousand of those are in Southern Maryland. And over the last ten years, we've seen a decline in the teachers available for the profession. Particularly in the last few years after the pandemic, you see a decline, excuse me, sorry. I've got messages popping up on the screen. So, oops, see now, I've got that. So, uh, little, little humor for everybody tonight. The state of Maryland, across the state, over the last five years, we've seen a number of vacancies at the beginning of the year. Now, we haven't had that as much locally, but across Maryland, last year, there were sixteen hundred vacancies at the beginning of the year. That's just one indicator of the teacher shortage.
And luckily for us, in last school year, we started the school year, the first day of school, with only fifteen classroom vacancies. The year before that, we started the school year with thirty-five classroom vacancies. So, even we've seen a, a decrease in the number of vacancies the very first day of school, which has been great for us.
Right. And so, where is that, why do we have those vacancies? So, we have to start at the root cause of it. And so, we look at the teacher education pipeline. And what you see here, and this is a report put out by the National Center for Teacher Quality, that the number of teachers going into teacher preparation programs has declined considerably over the last decade. We've seen a drop of about fifty percent in Maryland alone. And these numbers mirror the national trends as well. What we also see is only about thirty percent of those are completing that program. So, what that means is that that's one of the reasons why we see that shortage, is they're not coming through their traditional pipelines. We see some alternative programs that are developing. And what we've been trying to do is look at how we can address those issues across our region particularly. So, what we've seen is that about ten percent of the population of teachers in Maryland has, is licensed conditionally. That means they have a bachelor's degree in a content area, but it might not, they might not have all the coursework needed for teacher licensure in the state of Maryland. And so, we see about sixty-five hundred last year, and about a hundred in St. Mary's County Public Schools. And that number regionally is pretty consistent. And you can see that's about ten percent of our, of our teachers too. So, we're seeing similar patterns here that we see across the state. Now, here's some, some good news. That if you look at this piece of data here, these, that chart that you see on the right side, you see a more and more teachers coming home to teach. That is, more and more teachers are joining the school system from, public schools from where they graduated. So, we need to look at our grow your own programs. How can we build out programs that allow for future teachers to, to get these skills locally, attend school locally, and participate in programs locally, so that they can come home to teach? So, what are we doing? Well, whether you, this graphic really looks at some of the pre-service pathways that we're building out in Southern Maryland particularly. So, we have the Teacher Academy of Maryland. Now, we've got a great program, you've had, you've had presentations on that. You've had some of the students and teachers who have come through and talked glowingly about that program. I'm going to hop over one of these lanes to the two plus two program, because then they can go into CSM and take the first two years, and then continue with the second two years with a program like that of Towson, for example, at the university system of Maryland, Southern Maryland. And then the bachelor's degree program. We also have the Registered Apprentice Program. So, I want to talk a little bit, we're going to talk a little bit about some of these programs and how we're, we're building out these programs here in Southern Maryland by expanding TAM, uh, these high school programs, by connecting these Registered Apprentice Programs to these degree programs, and by building out AAT programs. And one of the things we're going to share with you is what we're doing with CSM. As well as mapping out programs for bachelor's degree in Southern Maryland. And there's, we have kind of a little bit of a gap here locally, not as many programs for people to take these bachelor's degree, degree programs. So, um, we have, I, I mentioned the TAM program. We have doubled the program in the last couple of years at the Forest Center. So, we have more and more high school students that are, that are participating in the program. We also introducing this year, an early college program for students who have completed the TAM program as juniors, to go in as seniors and enter full-time at the College of Southern Maryland here at the Leonardtown campus. We've actually worked with some of our TAMs who students, there's a number of them who are interested in that program. We had an information session with those parents and students last night, actually. So, those students will be able to take a sequence of courses that will be geared towards earning their AAT, and then only have one more year after they graduate with us, before they, they go on and finish those last two years. So, this is an exciting program, it's a wonderful partnership with the College of Southern Maryland, and it'll be an opportunity to, again, provide those, those coursework opportunities for students right here, and get as much of it, and honestly, a cheaper avenue for earning these credits as well.
And as we continue to discuss the idea of growing our own, with the iteration of the Maryland Leads Grant back in twenty twenty-two, we started a focus group of paraprofessionals with the idea to identify the pressing needs for those future teachers. There's always an intent and an excitement about becoming a future teacher, but there are continued barriers along the way. I just want to highlight a few of those that they discussed, because these are some of the responses that we have taken as we talk about the teacher apprentice program in just a moment. Some of their concerns were a lack of transparency regarding streamlined degree programs, the scheduling of coursework outside of the duty day, limited options for reduced tuition, or even just direct payment for those universities. The need for mentorship from licensed teachers as they go through this process, and the concerns about the necessity of taking a sabbatical and that financial pay cut to their family while they do the student internship experience. So, out of that focus group, we worked for a few years now, working collaboratively with paras, as well as with higher ed, trying to build some of these bridges. This year, we offered a PD session titled Pathway Certification, and it was presented in collaboration with CSM and Towson. It was well-attended and provided some opportunity to collaborate and connect about future opportunities as becoming future teachers. We also offer, offered personalized office hours with HR representatives to give them that one-on-one approach to sort of create that pathway. And just a really nice little note, out of that twenty twenty-two, twenty-three focus group, ninety-three percent are still employed with SMCPS and working towards their degree. And thirty, thirty-six percent of them are back in teaching positions. So, really wonderful stats that we can show.
And one of the great things about the pair-to-teacher pathway program is the board, with our negotiated agreement, we've offered the opportunity for paraeducators to receive higher levels of tuition reimbursement if they're in a program that leads them to teacher certification. So, that's one of the partnerships that we were able to develop with our unions and our associations, so that they can provide that benefit, or we can provide that benefit, to current staff members who are paras, trying to get them over the hump into the teaching fields.
Absolutely. And that comes into play as well as we talk about the teacher apprentice, apprentice program, which we've already given informational sessions about. But I want to highlight just a couple of things. That the teacher apprentice position was created as an additional support for those paraprofessionals to work through the pipeline, as well as providing, as we've said in our previous slides, about a non-traditional pathway towards licensure. St. Mary's County is the first registered apprenticeship with the Department of Labor. We are very proud of that, and we are continuing to partner with higher ed to find ways to continue to foster and remove those barriers for our teacher apprentices and our paraeducators. We're hoping to make some collaborations there. We have a first iteration, and that's a, a part of this initiative, and that's the streamlined cohort pathway with Towson. Towson was one of our first partners to come to the table, offering a cohort that is designed with a teacher apprentice in mind, where their courses are scheduled in a hybrid format of both online and in person, and they are scheduled outside of the duty day. We're really grateful for that partnership. And on top of that, SMCPS was recently awarded the Apprenticeship Innovation Grant through the Department of Labor. And this funding will support enhancements to include additional tuition support, because we've been talking about how difficult that is for them, and expanded opportunities for professional development, including this sponsored teacher role that we have added. So, each apprentice is partnered with a veteran teacher for at least fifty percent of their duty day, providing opportunities for collaboration and direct mentorship. I've had the opportunity to see them in action, and it is a really lovely collaborative environment, and a really fruitful relationship between both the veteran teacher and the future teacher in the classroom. In February, we sent out a request for quote, with higher education partners, and our next steps is to partner to fund a crosswalk of coursework, say that a bunch of times, crosswalk of coursework that incorporates embedded competencies for their on-the-job experiences. And I'd just like to close this part by saying that while a teacher apprentice works on their degree part-time, they're full-time in their craft. And that's what we want to try to provide them experiences for, and we need our higher education partners to come to the table to recognize those experiences.
And we talked a lot- And we talked a little, little bit about the increase in conditionally licensed teachers. And so what we've been working with, with our induction programs in collaboration with Human Resources, is how do we support them in those first couple of years, as they're learning on the job and they're taking those courses? And so expanding the partnerships, and I know Dr. Farrell's going to talk more about that too.
Yeah, so what, one of the things that we've been doing, we have a lot of college partners that we've always worked with, Notre Dame, Towson, University of Maryland. This year, we also expanded that. We partnered with Moreland University out of Washington DC. They're offering a program for initially certified teachers to become fully certificated in the state of Maryland. They have two options, one is a certification program, and the others, the other is actually a master's program. So we're providing them all different routes to whatever fits best for their learning style, their schedule, things like that, to get them across the finish line and become fully certified teachers in our school system, so.
And so what we've been working on the last couple of years is how do we look at this regionally? We can't solve this alone. We've got some wonderful solutions that we're doing here, but to really build out a sustainable model, we need the, the work of all of Southern Maryland combined. And so we've had a tri-county effort to address this through a summit we held last April, and this year, we're actually holding the next one, as Dr. Smith referenced earlier, will be this Friday. And there's over 20 organizations that are coming to the table to help us find these solutions. And that means, you know, as, as we look across, we've got the chancellor's office that is presenting options that are going to be deployed across the university system as a whole. We've got the Higher Ed Commission, we've got, you know, the, the union of all of the, the superintendents with PZAM. Just, you can see that all of these groups represented here. It is, it is taking all of us to address this critical need. And to sort of bring it home, we do have a, a quick little video here about something else that's coming up.
Be part of something great, make a difference, and teach. St. Mary's County Public Schools offers many opportunities across all grades and subject areas, as well as support for you as you learn and grow as a teacher with us. We can't wait to meet you. St. Mary's County Public Schools is hosting a teacher drive fair on Saturday, March 29th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School.
So yes, so Saturday is our big day. We do have, as of this evening, 68 total candidates that have signed up to participate in person, and they're scheduled with our principals and our administrative leaders throughout the school system for interviews on Saturday. So we can look to identify talent that we need to bring in for next year, so that we can start next year with zero classroom vacancies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, thank you all for all of your hard work that you're doing. I can definitely see the difference. I have a lot of friends in TAM, and they are so enthusiastic about it and just love it so much. So just thank you for all that you are doing.
Thank you, guys.
No questions, thank you.
And I want to thank you for your hard work as well. The TAM, there was a interview session with the students, TAM Students, Teacher Academy of Maryland. And Dr. Hall and I interviewed students in our TAM program. They presented their portfolio to us, which included their coursework and their experience. Thank you, Ms. Loric, for being there, Dr. Marr, Charlotte is Woodley, and it was a wonderful event. It's a three-day event, so we interviewed 10 of the TAM students. We asked them a series of questions. They were well-prepared, and they are looking forward to coming back to St. Mary's County Public School to teach. That's the short of the story, but it was a wonderful experience there. Two, three full days, so I did one day. And other students from other areas at the Tech Center were all, also being interviewed. And people say, do you teach your students how to interview? Do you show them how to do a resume? Do they have a portfolio available? And yes, we do that. And I participated in that yesterday. So thank you all for that. So we are doing our part to grow our own right here in St. Mary's County. And based on the experience they've had with their own teachers, they want to come back and teach. Thank you.
Thank you for the multiple pathways that you have developed over time. We have so many people who come to us with such varied experiences. It's nice to know that whatever they come with, we have a path for them, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to Friday. Friday's going to be a fantastic opportunity to gather around and, and orient ourselves. And then Saturday is just going to be seeing who's going to join us next. So if you're a special education teacher in particular, please come see us on Saturday.
We have one more, our last informational item, the elementary special area scheduling change proposal. We have Dr. Beavers, Ms. Bachner, Dr. Farrell. Sit in the chair for another round.
And before we start with this presentation, I'd like to be very clear that this presentation was delivered virtually to specials teachers in the, the first week of March. It was originally to be done in person on our full-day professional day, but we made the decision to turn that into a two-hour early release day so that we could maintain that Monday at the end of spring break as a, as a day off for, for students. We are presenting it today for the simple fact that everybody went out on Facebook and has rallied support and brought forth and had great comments tonight, but the public doesn't really have a context for what was discussed and where we were in the process. So we figured it's only fair to present publicly the, the presentation that was made and where we are in the process as we move forward.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So this is the proposed elementary special area scheduling changes presentation, as Dr. Smith said, that we presented on the 7th. We prefaced this with, at the end, we'll collect feedback on the proposal. We will collect that, we will collect that feedback through March 31st.
So we'll consider tonight very specific feedback, and we thank you for it.
And so we've met every week since we had that presentation, looked at feedback, synthesized a lot of the feedback. And so we will do that through Monday. So the special area schedule, it's a four-day cohort model. So instead of having one 10-day rotation, it's an A, B, C, D cycle that starts again on the fifth day, right? So if you had, for example, art on A day, when you got to Friday, if A day was a Monday, when you got to Friday, you'd have art again. So there is a week in the cycle where you would have two of that particular special. So what does that mean? So for third, fourth, and fifth graders, the cohort model would be employed by grouping students by whatever they choose for their music selection. So those would be general music, band in fourth and fifth, and then orchestra and corus, chorus for fourth and fifth. And then students would choose, had to have to choose that by the end of the school year so that scheduling could be performed over the summer. Now, this model is scheduled to be phased in over three years, with six schools being scheduled to, to take place in '26, seven more in '27, and then five more in '28.
So just to be clear, the, the current, the current 10-day rotation, two weeks, you have PE, how many times in the 10 weeks?
In the 10 days, you have, you have PE three times.
Three times. And how many times you have music?
Three times.
And how many times you have media?
You have once, or twice in a, in a 10-day rotation.
And art?
Twice.
Okay, so in the current model, we have a differential PE three, music three, art only twice, media only twice. In a, in a cohort, four-day, how does that change?
Once, once for each per rotation.
So every 12 days?
Every 12 days.
So there'd be three, so music meets three times in 12 days, PE meets three times in 12 days, art meets three times in three days, so, okay. So they're all, they all would receive the same amount of time?
Correct, correct, correct. So as required by Blueprint, we have a literacy plan and a math plan. They call for 135 minutes of ELA and 90 minutes of math per day. So tier-one instruction, which is delivered to all students, those are our tier-one kids, that's our core instruction. And then kids that receive tier, tier-two or tier-three instruction, those cannot occur during tier-one instruction. You don't pull a kid out of reading to do reading. And so time is, you know, of the essence regarding those. And Ms. Bachner's going to go into more detail about that.
Yeah, so I just want to share a little bit, there was a lot of questions. Tier-one is 135 minutes in ELA for grades K through three. In our literacy plan, that was adopted by the state. And then as Dr. Beaver said, tier-two and tier-three has to be outside of that time. It has to be extra or extended. So if you, if you look at the ELA for 135 minutes, that's, if you think about high school secondary, it's three periods, math, two periods, and a teacher teaches six. So the last period in a classroom teacher's day would either be social studies or science. And we allow K through three to kind of do social studies and say, science every other day. But fourth and fifth grade, as you know, fifth grade MESA is an assessed area. We want students to have science every single day when they hit fourth and fifth grade, so that ELA 135 minutes actually can be 45 minutes ELA social studies to allow for that last period, science, for all students every day. So I just wanted to clarify, so there was some questions about, you know, the research and pulling students out. It, it doesn't have to do with that, it has to do with what we have to provide students in tier-one, two, and three.
So the proposal provides equal access to special areas, music, which we've, and music choices for students, which we've discussed. Green Holly has been using the cohort model for 10 years. We did get some feedback on that. Some folks felt like it was disingenuous the way it was presented. And it's not to say that the cohort model is that the reason that they have, have all this recognition and success. It's a piece of the puzzle, and, and people have seen good results out of making that move, some positive results. So Green Holly does that in a grade level, and they still have a couple pullouts for other things. That was, that that was, you know, that was presented in the feedback as well. Park Hall also pilots the cohort model. I went down to Park Hall to see, to see it in action, to kind of see how kids got from place to place. But anyway, they, they've implored the cohort model, and they've seen some success as well. The bullets below are from them relative to kind of those things that they've seen that are beneficial. Clearly, they went from 25 band classes, 13 classes per week, two chorus classes per week, to zero pullouts. Those kids were being pulled out before. They're still getting the classes that they chose without pullouts. So that's the benefit they've, they've seen, that they feel like that that's helped reduce referrals, suspensions, ISI, and keep kids in their learning environment, so. The inclusion of band, chorus, and orchestra in the special area schedule offers them a unique opportunity, students a unique opportunity to be exposed to the options provided in music education with minimal disruption. So music education won't go away, no, nothing will go away. But currently, students participating in these ensembles are required to be pulled out of instruction two to four times per week, depending on how many they're participating in. The frequent removal can create gaps in their learning and disrupt the continuity of their regular learning experience. Go ahead.
With our current 10-day special area schedule, which we have shared, and Dr. Smith shared with that, it has created some equity, inequities amongst our staff in that some elementary special area teachers have a large number of school support, time blocks in their schedules, and some elementary special areas have, don't have any of those. It depends on the school and the size of the school and how many staff members that they have. Elementary special area teachers have shared numerous times over the last, past few years that they do not want school support schedules, but they would rather teach what they went to school and have a passion for. And you heard that passion tonight. And all elementary teachers should teach in their content area to the fullest extent possible, having a daily planning period and a duty-free lunch, and that's their contract. So what would it look like? And we alluded to this a little bit, but in primary, it is different, because of course, we don't need to go to a cohort model in primary. So if all students have one of four elementary special area classes each day, for an example, Ms. Teacher's first grade class has the following schedule on the first day of school, and typically, we start on a Wednesday, we are this year, so I started with a Wednesday. So her class on Wednesday, A day, would go to media, Thursday, B day, PE, Friday, C day, music, Monday, D day, art, and then it cycles again. Tuesday, she, they would have A day and media again.
So they're all, may I just ask a question real quick? So they're all going to be together?
Correct, in K1 and 2.
In the media and the?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just like they are now, Ms. Andrews, with their, with their homeroom usually. You know, we call it their homeroom or their class. Yep. How would an A, B, C, D schedule look for music in grades three, four, or five in the cohort model? So all students, again, have one of four elementary special area classes each day in the cohort model. However, in third and fourth and fifth grade, students have a choice in their music class. They can take general music in third grade or orchestra. And in fourth and fifth grade, they can take general music or orchestra or band or chorus, so they have a choice. And those actually, fourth and fifth grade have the same choices that they have when they go to middle school. So for example, if a student chooses chorus, they'd be in the chorus cohort for fourth grade. And again, we're starting on Wednesday, they have media as a group of those chorus students on Wednesday, or Wednesday. They'd have media, A day, Thursday, B day, they'd have PE. Friday, C day, they would go to their chorus class. And then Monday, D day, they would go to art. And then, of course, it all cycles again, with Tuesday, they have A day and media. So here's some other information about the schedule that we have input, and we know we need to work on, and this was shared. For most schools, this would be the music teacher will teach general man, general music, band, and chorus. And most schools using this model will then need to have an itinerant strings teacher, because after talking with Mr. Burrows, he shared with us the complexities of strings is a little different than even band is. So we would want to put a more specialized teacher in those itinerant schools. And if needed, also, most schools have adaptive PE students, which are special ed students who have that, that have that service. And we would also service them by having an itinerant adaptive PE teacher. And we have been working with special ed and Ms. Ellis to make sure that we're starting to gather that information. And then media clerks will be placed at schools based on enrollment, special education programming, such as TIES, Compass Sale classes, and Title I status. And that is not defined, and we had a lot of Google forms that asked for that definition. So we'll be working that when the survey closes at the end of March. And just a reminder, as is our current practice for the last few years, pre-K teachers can teach specials. They are generalist and able to do so. This has been the practice, and pre-K students only receive time with specialists if the specialist's time permits them to do so. And as I shared before, some specialists do have time in their schedule to service pre-K in some schools. And some schools, this hasn't happened for years because they didn't have the time. We are going to work on guidance regarding special area report cards, because that does need to look at, be looked at, given the number of students that those specialists service and teach every day. And we do need to look at concert expectations and make sure that they're appropriate and maybe revised. And then, of course, we do have to look at the curriculum and make sure that it is revised as needed. So making sure those band classes have those general music standards embedded in them. The good news is we've done a cursory look, and a lot of them are already embedded in much of what we feel can be not too big of a lift curriculum-wise, but of course, we will work on that this summer.
So we looked at a plan of rolling this out over three years, bringing on certain schools in certain years. So in year one, we were looking at bringing on Banneker, Carver, Duke, Evergreen, Hollywood, and Park Hall, meaning that we would staff those schools based on the number of specials area classes that need to be offered based on the student enrollment in those schools. The following year, year two, we would do the same thing for Luddy Marshall Dent, Diner, Green Holly, Greenview Knowles, Leonard Town Elementary, Lexington Park, and Piney Point. And then finally, in the third year, we would look at our smaller schools, Mechanicsville, Oakville, Ridge, Town Creek, and White Marsh, and bring those schools on. The reason by doing this over three years is that we can look at using attrition as needed if we don't have enough positions to fully have all of the classes in each of these schools. So by changing this cohort model, it also changes some staffing numbers as well. Now, principals in the, the schools that we were planning to roll out in years two and three could choose to, to go to the cohort model, but we would not change their staffing yet. We would wait until those school years to, to change their staffing allocations. So looking at next year, if we were to adopt this, this program. So, looking at next year, if we were to adopt this, this program, we have already shared with principals draft schedules that show them how this cohort model would roll out. Those schedules, the principals were allowed to share that with their teachers, so they could kind of see what this rollout schedule would look like. It would reduce, if we did this next year, it would reduce the number of itinerant teachers that are going to those six schools. Which means that you would work at, at one school half of your week, and another school another half of your week, or half of your day at one school, and half of your day at another school. Instead of having three or four itinerant teachers rolling in and out of those schools, it would just be one. The school support classes, there would be very few of those, if any. And because we're taking out those extra pl- extra periods, we wouldn't need as many staff at those schools. So that means, what do we do about all the extra positions for the first year? Well, we look at the negotiated agreement, we make sure that we follow that for making sure that staffing is, is consistent throughout the school system like we always do. We look at normal attrition, you know, who's resigning or retiring, or being promoted to other positions, where we have vacancies throughout the system. And then we go through the voluntary and involuntary transfer process, just like we normally would. So we put together a, a Google survey to get feedback from the specialists. We shared the link to the, the Google survey online during our meeting, and we have received lots and lots and lots of feedback.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, which we have been looking at and reviewing and sharing, and discussing some of the challenges that they bring forward, and some of the solutions that they bring forward as well.
Can I ask a question?
Wait, I'm gonna start. All right, so, school support, help me with that. So if I am a strings teacher, right, and it's been a hot minute since my kids have been in elementary school, I don't have a full class day, I don't have students every single timeframe of the day in elementary school, correct? But am I staying at that school, or am I jumping around schools?
You could do either.
Okay.
Let's say that you're at that school a hundred percent of the time.
Right.
And there's not enough classes to fill your schedule, then you're provided, in addition to your lunch and planning, you're provided school support classes.
And what is that?
School support could be, you're going to provide interventions into another classroom. It could be that you're asked to cover other classes when there's vacancies. It could be lunch duty, it could be recess duty, it could be bus duty.
And varies by day?
I'm sorry?
I mean, it can vary by day?
It could vary by day, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then for the pullouts, if I, so, I'm a fourth grader, and I'm doing band and chorus on the schedule that we have now. So how many times am I coming out of a class, or a week?
If you are a fourth or fifth grader, you are allowed to pick band and chorus, or orchestra and chorus currently.
Right.
And that means, we, we have suggested that for band and orchestra, it's two forty-five minute classes a week for, for those, and one chorus.
Okay.
So you put, three, three forty-five minute classes a week.
In a five-day period?
In a five-day period, yes.
Okay. And I'm assuming for scheduling that band and chorus are the same times every single, at the same time every week? So let me just say, it's Tuesday at ten o'clock is my chorus time, right? So every Tuesday at ten o'clock, regardless of what is happening in my classroom, I'm being pulled out to go to chorus?
That is my understanding, that we would have to survey all the principals to see if that is actually what occurs in every school. At the same exact time every week, I am not a hundred percent sure of that.
Okay. So then, so let's say now I'm a classroom teacher, and I have X number of children that leave my classroom every day at ten o'clock to go to chorus, right? So now what are my responsibilities to make sure that that student makes up that work that they missed during that forty-five minute block?
It's difficult. We do not want students, we try to have students not have to have extra homework because they're missing that, but that doesn't always happen.
Okay.
So, the teachers can't stop the instruction for all the students
Right.
For that amount of time, that many times a week, which is an issue.
Right, okay. And then, I'm not getting a, I'm not, I'm not being, not, and grading, I know because we don't do grading anymore, but I'm not being assessed on my band, or music, or orchestra, correct? I mean, I'm sorry, not music, band, for these, for these pullouts. I'm not being assessed, assessed on that.
There is a report card, it is not, I, people, this is Mrs. Bachner's time, you guys cannot do that, please. Go ahead. Band and chorus have a report card that is issued, it is not through HAC. It comes as an attachment to the report card. That is not, my understanding is, most schools do not have a chorus report card that comes out. And attendance is not logged in HAC, like the other courses.
Okay. All right, so, and then, do I, if I'm a student now, all right? So now I'm a student, and I'm leaving chorus every day, or Tuesday, my ten o'clock example. But now there is an exam, or there is a test, or there's something that I don't want to miss. Can I now choose to skip chorus and stay in my classroom? And how is that decision made?
I do not know that answer. I would have to ask the principals that question.
Okay.
And I, I will tell you, this is one of the struggles that we've, we've had, is that there isn't any uniformity from building to building in the way in which schedules are, are built. And it also is driven by student interest. So in some larger schools, you'll have a full chorus of, you know, eighteen, twenty, up to thirty-five students. At another one, you might just have two fifth-grade kids for strings. So, it, I, it, trying to wrap your arms around all of it is an absolute challenge. And the, and the, and the more we, we drill into it, we have conversations, and we're, this is why, we had a form till the end of this month to gather information and feedback, and then consider and come back with all of this. Each one of the schools is its own entity, and has its own challenges, and it's driven by student interest. But what we heard tonight was the deep value of allowing a child to take general music, because everybody takes general music, and nobody talked about what was going on in general music. But everybody takes general music, but then that child can also choose to take chorus and band, or strings and chorus, which means that they will be pulled out consistently throughout.
Right.
But that's only at some, that's in some buildings, in some buildings, it's, it's, it's others. Some might have fifteen or twenty kids at a grade level who are doing actually two different things, and others, others may, may not at all. It is, it is very different building to building, and it's also dependent upon the, the, the size of the building and the interest of the students.
Okay. All right, so then on the staffing for, if we go to the proposal, and now I have a student in fourth or fifth grade that either decides to take general music or a specialty, what, I only have one music teacher, how is that gonna work?
The, as, as the slide showed, the music teacher, we're expecting to teach general music, chorus, and band, and then would have an itinerant strings person to come in to do that.
Right, but, so like, let's say if, if I have a third grade cla- or fourth grade class, and I go to music, right? If, you know, if Mr. Smith's, Dr. Smith's class goes to music, everyone is in music, but what about those kids that select to go to chorus?
So you're in a cohort, so we would, we would have all the kids select what music they wanted in May, and we would put them in a class based on that. So all the chorus kids would be in the class.
Oh, I got that, okay, now.
All that, got that?
That's the piece I was not getting.
So like, there's four cohorts?
I'm with you now.
It's sort of like a middle, high, I mean, that's, yeah, yeah.
I, I was not connecting on that. I'm like, how are they gonna teach both the same thing at the same time? Okay. All right, and then, I understand the, the whole staggering of the rollout, but I guess, and it's gonna depend on what our budget numbers come into as to whether or not we stagger the rollout, or we do everything coming forward in, in one year.
What I would deeply appreciate, the patience of the board, is to allow us to go back to what we were originally doing, which was,
Right.
We've gathered this, we've presented, we've gotten feedback till the end of this week, we had two and a half hours of feedback tonight. I'd like to go back, staff would like to go back and talk through all of this, and then, as we had originally intended, plan to come forward on that, on April ninth, and actually present what it would be, and then talk very specifically about staffing and numbers and reduction. The original intent of this was not to reduce staff. The original intent of this was to make it equitable across all of the specials, make sure that all of the teachers had a similar load to a classroom teacher, and were teaching everything in their content, and evidently I'm out of time. And, and make sure that we were, that, that we were keeping core instruction, tier-one instruction, really making sure that that is the priority, because only fifty percent of our children in three, four, and five are proficient in ELA, and only forty percent, something?
Out of here.
In, in math. And our science scores last year took like a ten or fifteen percent
Dive.
Dive. So, we want to balance all of the, the, the wonderful things that make education important, but we also have to look at what all is, some of the most specific measures that we say whether or not a school is doing what it needs to be doing.
And my last question, well, go ahead.
I just want to couple with, I'm glad everybody came out tonight, and I can feel your passion, and I, I love the stories that you share, and I love the people that, that went through all of this and have come back, and they're, and they are now, they are now teaching several of you I know very well, I remember you in high school. We are in a critical moment with budget. Before you walked in here, how many people knew that the county commissioners raised taxes and flat-funded the school system for the next five years? What they proposed in their five-year budget is flat-funding for the school system. That means there will never be another raise. You will never get another raise. And we are going to have to slowly remove positions and programs to take care of incremental increases in healthcare and utilities, and ultimately your retirement. The state decided to hand the retirement now back down here, and the commissioners picked it up. We are being picked apart at the federal level, at the state level, and at the local level. And I beg you, please, give us grace and patience, so we don't pick ourselves apart from within. I know, I know that there are brilliant people, and we can all wrap together around this and figure out the very best way to meet all of the objectives, and not necessarily diminish the, the great things that you have offered to children. Mrs. Washington in particular, we, we take great pride in, in being recognized for our incredible arts program. And we are unwavering support of fine arts. And while the rest of the world has gone after and, and cut media specialists, and, and closed libraries, and pulled this out of, of, basically got rid, Howard County, they, they bit the bullet, they, we haven't down here. And we are two hundred dollars per kid off the being the lowest-funded school system in the state of Maryland. So we all have to work together to figure this thing out, and to compel people who actually can provide them the funding to do, to continue to do all the things that we're, we're doing. It's gonna, it's, it's really gonna, it's really gonna be, it's, I take it very personally. Not what you, I mean, I, I take, I take the school system very personally. I've been doing this, it's my eleventh year, for ten years. We have found a way every single year to slug it out in the streets
And make it work.
To get, to make it work, to make the negotiated agreement work. And this is the first year that basically we've been told, well, the state's turned its back on you, we're gonna turn our backs on you too. And I need you to, I need you to carry that same, the passion that you have tonight, I need you, I need you to carry it to other people that really, that really need to hear how special the school system is, and how special the things we do for children are. Okay? Last year, you all rolled out, and we got seven million dollars. I need another miracle. So. Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, it's been a long night. I get up really early, by, by eight o'clock, my brain's kind of gone.
Right, no, I mean, Dr. Smith's right, I mean, we've, we've been in Annapolis, what, very long days?
Oh, my God.
Right, multiple times?
We begged.
And, and it's just, it's, everything that we are saying falls on deaf ears. And I've sat up here, I don't know how many of you watch these board meetings, but I've been here for ten years, and what we have done over the past ten years, and to build up the school system, is in jeopardy of being completely dismantled, piece by piece, over the next four. So, I mean, I appreciate, again, all the passion for, you know, music, and art, and band, and orchestra, and everything that we do. But the, we are at a very stark reality, and it was best shown in Dr. Smith's slide about what that budget shortfall is, because you don't make up seven and a half million dollars, you know, by nickel and diming things. So.
Or you just tell teachers to
Right.
Politely, just take it in the teeth, and you work really hard, and we negotiated a great agreement, and it's the envy of everybody else, but we're not gonna be able to do it. And that's, I mean, that's twenty-three hundred people.
Right.
So.
So, all right, Hannah, I believe you have questions.
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you so much for this presentation, and kind of informing all of us, because obviously some people at the schools knew, but not the board, and I think it's really important that it was brought to the Board of Education. And I completely see all of the budgeting deficits that our school system is faced with, and I see the benefits that this program could possibly imply, imply for education time. But I firmly believe that we can come together to create a better solution than stripping kids of the opportunity to choose their art programs.
Hannah, are you just saying that because, of course, I visited Leonardtown today, and when I walked into Leonardtown, where were you?
In chorus.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. You're not cutting chorus from the high school, do not put that out there.
No, 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 no.
I'm just saying, no, and they were practicing for their, for their concert, May, May eighth, and, and that was just a, that's a, it was a, it was, it was, it was just
Do not put that out in the universe.
It was just, it was just fantastic. I can't tell you how much I enjoy interacting with all of our fantastic performers, and it really is, it just, it just drives home when I see a senior who's as accomplished as Hannah is, and know that her path came through programming like this.
Sorry, I'm like getting emotional, I just really love music so much.
Sorry, I, yes, I, yes. That's what I do at all your concerts, just so it's fair. Just so it's fair, you, you always make me cry in the, in the audience. Yeah.
All right. Josh, do you have anything?
Oh, no.
Oh, do you have more?
Yeah, sorry.
I didn't, I didn't know if you need a moment to get yourself together, we'll, we'll jump over to
Oh, no, I'm okay.
Okay.
Um, so I would personally say the music changed my life for sure. I was definitely more of like a gifted kid in elementary school. So I didn't necessarily struggle in elementary school subjects, but music was like the one thing that I really struggled in, and I was terrible at it. But like, getting better at it really helped me as a student. And I've found to like, in chorus, I'm in chamber choir, I've been in chamber choir for three years. I've missed about thirty days of school for chamber choir, so that's about nine thousand minutes of education time that I've missed so far in high school. And I know that there is an argument that, like, the kids can't make up the time that they lost. But I just want to say that I don't think that that's necessarily completely true. I've been first in my class for three years. The kids that take music and art are the gifted kids, and they do deserve the opportunity to take whatever art classes and music classes they want to take. And I don't think it's fair to restrict kids and tell them that they can only take one thing. And I'm so sorry, once I start crying, I can't stop. I'm so sorry, embarrassing myself on public television. Um, but I do just want to say that as a student member of the Board of Education, I've visited every single fifth grader in the county, and at all elementary schools I've visited, I asked them to list their top ten things about each school, and at every single one of the nineteen elementary schools, they listed specials in their top ten. So clearly, specials are important to students. So obviously, this proposed change im- impacts their ability to pursue their passions. And so if a student is passionate about both chorus and orchestra, and they want to do both in middle and high school, they need the time to learn those crafts in elementary school. That way, they can be prepared for those opportunities in middle school and high school. And so they need the time in elementary school to be able to pursue everything that they're passionate about. So my question is, I just want to clarify, like, once and for all, with this schedule, is it impossible for students to take multiple forms of music?
Yes.
If we were to implement it exactly as presented, yes. Now that, and I will also say that there is time in elementary schedule Now that, and I will also say that there is time in elementary schedules at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day and they have, they have a thirty-minute lunch and a thirty-minute recess. There's an opportunity, that, that's the part where we need to get, we really need to bring in people, be very creative, take a look at all the time that's available in the day and while holding tier-one instruction somewhat, somewhat harmless, figure out all the other times in the day where, where, where something could be called out.
Yeah, so I would strongly recommend that, you know, we gather together with, with students and teachers and figure out a solution that allows people to take multiple forms of music and explore all their passions while still fulfilling the tier-one, two and three requirements of the book, thank you.
I, I don't have any questions, I just thank you guys for the presentation. And I wanna thank all of you guys for coming out, I, I do wanna say I value what, always what the public has to say and it does help me make my decisions and as a former Saint Mary's County Public School student, I can tell you I loved my specials, so hopefully we'll be able to work on this a little bit and you guys come back with us and, and present some more, so, thank you.
Well, yes, every story, every person that came up, the story was beautiful. Because I know, hey, I can't sing, I am trying to learn how to play the piano now. Okay, so it's never too late, but the stories I could identify with some of the people, how music had changed them, because you need something to carry you through your struggles. Sometimes you don't know how to express yourself or you don't understand what's going on and music is a beautiful thing and it is very soothing. I appreciated when that came out, because I think it gave me a different perspective that I didn't really understand going through it yesterday. So, thank you for helping with better understanding, because we do want the best for each one of the students that are in our schools. And there's a lot of weight on the staff's shoulders right now. So, you know, be, be gracious to them, fill out that form so that way they can get as much input, so they can make an informative decision. And I, I, I know it's gonna work out for good, okay? So, thank you for coming out, I really appreciate it, okay? Thank you, that's all I got, thank you.
Mary.
I wanna thank you all for coming out, your opinions and input is valuable to me in making a decision and for me to understand exactly where you're coming from. I have attended many concerts, tri-county, orchestra, chorus, and it's all wonderful. And the guest conductors have always complimented Saint Mary's County and say, wow, you are beyond everything they have experienced. Our students are well-prepared, they follow the rules and they do a brilliant performance. And I look forward to attending those concerts. Dr. Smith and I go to just all of them and we really love it. I completely agree with the benefits of music education that you brought up tonight. I agree with the research on it as well. And we are a nationally recognized school, system for music education. That speaks volumes of what we do and I wanna thank all the music educators for what they do. My son was in music from elementary, middle and high school, he was the drum major at Great Mills High School. And with that experience, he received a partial scholarship to the University of Maryland College Park for music. Also, a parent contacted me and said everything her son learned started in elementary school at SMCPS. He went on through middle school, high school, now he is a national musician. He composes, he writes and he loves it. And she says she doesn't know what he would have done without music in his life. And also, continue to fill out the form, as the superintendent said, that they're gonna be reviewed, he's gonna share them, he's gonna discuss them and he's gonna present to the board again. So make your voice known. With us working together, all these brilliant minds in this room, we can come up with a solution, a solution that works. It may not be one hundred percent, but it'd be probably ninety-nine point nine. Cause we are a brilliant school system, I believe in the school system and I believe in all the people that work in the school system. Everybody, building service workers, cafeteria workers, educators, administrators, support staff, board members and superintendent, we work really hard and we take our jobs seriously. I have dedicated twenty-nine years of my life to being a Board of Education member and before that, seven years volunteering at Green Holly Elementary School, almost there every day. So this is my passion, purpose and my calling in life. And we will come up with good solutions and I am thrilled that you came out. I'm glad our students came out to speak as well. That's what teachers teach students to do, to advocate for themselves, how to prepare a speech, keep it to three minutes. That's our time limit and.
Do I need to time you, Mary? It's nine fifteen, these people have been here since five o'clock.
I, I know, but it is important that they realize that, how much we appreciate them. Usually I don't talk much, but this is my passion and I can't help it. I mean, but anyway, I appreciate all of you and we will get through this. The superintendent, his heart is in it.
We'll figure it out.
He started here as a teacher and now superintendent.
Okay, the bell is done.
Okay, hold it, hold it, hold it.
Did it go back?
Hold it, yeah.
Back in the day.
To the day.
Entire century.
And he's still here. It's a great place to live, work, play and learn, so, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience listening to me, but when it comes to the school system, I just can't stop praising it, so thank you and fill out the form, okay?
Thank you to everyone who came out and took the time to either sit here and listen to all the presentations or had the courage to stand up at the podium and speak. It is greatly appreciated and it's, it's not easy to do that and I think we all understand that, so please know that it, it has great meaning. I will just quickly say that, and now Hannah's got me started. That in my own home, one of my children really struggled to read, really struggled. And it was not until I got her involved in music.
Thank you.
That, that, that turned the tide for her. And it was, it was wild to me to see just the significant impact on her and how it helped her with, with, with math and with, with reading. So, you were preaching to the choir. For the many people in this room who know me personally or who were here this evening and know me personally, you know I ask lots of questions. And please know that I have asked lots of questions and I will continue to do so. And my aim is always to ask the kinds of questions that will help me make good decisions, but that are also the kinds of questions that anybody else would ask to understand. And I don't do anything until I understand. And lastly, you've asked something of us, I'm gonna ask something of you. We really need your help in making the case to our commissioners that this isn't just important to fund the school system, it is critical to our future. It is critical to the sex, success of this community. That's, I think, why we pay taxes. They need to remember that. Please help us make that case, because you all can do it a lot better. They'll listen to you, because most of you all vote. So they don't wanna hear from us. We're not credible anymore, but you guys are. You, your friends, parents, please, whether you speak at their public hearing on the budget coming up in April or whether you send them letters, emails, whatever, let them hear from you. Be respectful, use data, use examples. Always respectful, because they hear that more than when we let our passion overtake us. So with that, thank you for coming and I think we're done.
When, where is the public forum for the budget?
For twenty-second.
Is April twenty-second, it is at Lenartown High School.
Yeah.
And.
Tune into the next board meeting, we'll have a lot more specific information on where we stand. We'll probably know state numbers a little, a little bit.
No, we won't.
Well.
They're, they're, they're gonna go to the very end with the budget, so we're not gonna know.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, it stinks.
So.
But I will tell you, if you tell anybody to watch what you guys all just did tonight and you walk away thinking that this school system isn't really special, they didn't hear you.
Right. So whoever made the social media graphic for this, better get on board and start making one for that public hearing, so. Just saying, I don't know who that was. Alright, and with that, our next board meeting is on Wednesday, April ninth. It's morning, so you guys won't be here, you'll all be at work. Eight o'clock with executive session. Nine o'clock, maybe we should move the presentation of what we're gonna do with this to the evening meeting so everyone can come back, Scott, there you go, so, alright, we are done.